Okay. Good day. Bueno, eh. Ahí yo lo, yo te... A ver, niña. De los, de los bajes. Mira los adios. Ponle un papelito. Yo creo que por aquí yo tengo papelito.
Alrighty. Madam Manager, Clerk, whenever you're ready. It's 7:32, so I want to get it on the ruler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are ready to proceed.
Are we live?
Yes, sir.
Alright. It is Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. It is now 7:32 PM. And this is a regular City Commission meeting and public hearing for the final budget meeting for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. This meeting is now open. Could I get everyone to stand up for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance? Who's going to be giving the invocation?
I'll, I'll be delivering the invocation. Good evening to all. Let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to assemble as a group and for every seat that has been filled here this evening. We thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of, of you in this room. We pray for the greater good of the city. We pray for our elected officials and all leaders at all levels. We pray for the well-being of our residents. Father, strengthen our confidence, set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Tonight, we pray for our military personnel, our police officers, our firefighters, so that they can return safely after their shift. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
First.
Commissioner Candy Dablanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Present to the next item. Proceed. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for August 17, 2022 executive session, August 17, 2022, regular City Commission meeting, September 6, 2022, local planning agency meeting, September 6, 2022, a special commission meeting, a tentative budget hearing.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, let's go forward to... How do we have the agenda set up today? Do we have the budget meeting and behind the commission meeting? I think that we should change that up. I'm assuming most people here are for, here for the budget portion of the meeting, right? Yeah, so let's, let's not keep you, let's not keep you waiting on that. The only thing I will ask is that we do... What is the item, Mr. Attorney, that you wanted to...
Page number two.
Page number two, item...
Number one.
So let's, let's take that out of order real quick and then, is that possible? Can we open the, do that item, open the public hearing on the budget and then return back to the regular commission meeting? Right, okay. So let's do that. Go ahead. On item 10A?
Ten...
Is it 10A?
Ten...
A?
Ten A and B.
10A and B?
A and B. Okay, item 10A, continued for an August 17, 2022, commission meeting, request for appeal of decision by the Planning and planning board, an application for signed permit presented on April 26, 2022, before the board. Property address 6200 Southwest 8th West Miami, Florida, 32144. Business owner Jerry Diaz. Mr. Diaz is present. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Say your name and address to the record.
Yes, Jerry Diaz, 6200 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a problem. The applicant in this particular case is Genesco Partners for a sign application. The gentleman, I understand, is a tenant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the tenant has no standing in order to appeal anything.
Okay. This is... When we get into these procedures, it's, there's highly technical stuff, there's legal procedure we have to follow. Have, have you guys interacted on this matter yet? Or is this something that's new to you? Is this, is this new to you, that, that this idea that you don't have standing here today?
Yes, correct, it's new.
Okay. Could, could we have a sidebar on that to come back from? I know you have a situation tonight, but could we, could we get you guys to talk on that issue to see if there is a resolution or, you know, that can be had there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Be very happy to.
Yeah, please, please do. So I, unfortunately, we can't, we can't, it would be fruitless to talk about it today because my city attorney is advising we don't have standing. So anything we decide here today wouldn't, wouldn't have any bearing. But I'd be happy to make sure that you speak to the attorney, see if there's something we can work out in a way that we can actually decide on, on what you're, you're bringing forth. And I apologize for that. I just, I didn't know about this until right now, so...
No, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, so...
So we're going to do it now? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, please do.
Thank you.
So Mayor...
At this, yeah, I, let's...
Defer the item?
Yes, defer the item. All in favor of deferral of item A and B? Actually, I need a motion, one way or the other. So can I get a motion on the deferral?
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor of deferring items A and B? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Alright. So I know we're messing around with the agendas, but at this time, I'd like to move away from new business and into the budget. And I know it's a public hearing. So let's first talk... Let me get the clerk back. Alright, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
On the final budget, I know there's a submission, so item L. Item L, on the final, on the final budget public hearing.
Okay, so let's proceed with the public hearing, final budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, submittal. Item 11L, submission of the final city budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would like to report on, well, the first thing I'd like to report on is that we have made, met the statutory requirement for legal advertisement. Our budget ads appeared in the Miami Herald, the neighbor section, which appeared Sunday, the 19th. We have proof of publication. It is, the proof of publication is already certified by the newspaper and we had to pursue into the TRIM schedule, which is the Truth in Millage, which is a standard set forth by the Department of Revenue on budget ads and other timeline requirements. We advertised for a budget summary ad. Additionally, we had to advertise for a notice of proposed tax increase. Although we lowered the millage rate by 3%, we are still required to publish a notice of tax increase because assessed values have increased over the years and that triggers additional revenue to the general fund and thus the recreation center because one mill is devoted to the recreation center. So by law, we had to advertise. Both ads are placed in your pocket for your review and we have met, the Department of Revenue already signed off on the ads. They approved it before that it was published. Mrs. Leon has an email verifying this information, our finance director.
Go ahead.
Madam Manager?
Sir.
I have a question for you, just to be clear for the benefit of all the attendance today to our meeting.
Yes, sir.
What, what publication did we use last year to publish this information?
The same one.
The same one.
Yes, sir.
How many years back have we done this?
I can tell you that, off the top of my head, at least the last five to seven years, we have had to use the same advertisement requirement.
So for the last...
The only thing that changes, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is the budget summary ad, where you have to disclose whether your expenses are greater than the previous year or less than the previous year.
I'm trying to keep it simple, one step at a time, so everyone knows this, this publication that we made, we make every year.
Every single year.
And it's been in the same publication, the neighbor section, Miami Herald, neighbor section.
Yes, sir.
There you could, every year around this time, we make that publication. And as the city manager stated, it doesn't matter if we lower our taxes, our millage, if it goes up, we have to advertise because that is a...
Well, no. No way around. If, if, no matter if the millage goes down, if the revenue goes up...
Right, that's what I meant.
And, and what that means is, you have an apartment building. The apartment building is taxed at a, how much higher, it has a lot more value than a single-family house, right? So if we lower the millage rate, even though your property taxes are, your property value is capped at a 3% increase, the apartment building is not, right? So the apartment building can have a 10% increase in, in value, while your homeowner is a 3% increase. So if we lower our millage rate and your millage rate actually is, sorry, your taxes that you actually pay is flat from last year or lower than last year, if we're getting more revenue because the buildings are, are, the value is increasing much more, we still have to advertise a notice of tax increase, even if we're not actually increasing residential taxes. So that, that's what, that's what they're saying.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for explaining that.
But we'll go, we'll go into this, I'm sure. We'll, we'll have some time to, to talk about this.
Is everyone clear? Does anyone have any questions?
And, and you don't have, you don't have to be clear or not clear when, when, we'll, we'll, we'll keep talking about it, explaining it and working through problems and maybe have even better results, so that's, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to go over the summary of the general funds as submitted at the tentative budget hearing, where we didn't have that many members in the, of the public present. I'd like to go through it. It's a brief presentation. If we go to my memo, it's about an 18-page memo.
Yeah, do the brief version. I, I'd like to briefly explain before, before public hearing starts, before we start getting comments from the public, what I intend to propose for the last budget hearing, that window we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll open it up and, and hear from, from everyone and then go into discussion.
Okay.
Alright, so please go ahead.
Okay, so...
May I be heard, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
May we go back to the prior item?
To the prior item?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a meeting with the tenant and he gave me some documentation and he's going to speak to the owner. So the owner can be a properly represented.
Okay.
And I'm going to get with Mr. Pena and we'll report by next week.
I appreciate you. Do you, do you need to be excused now?
I do.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor. Madam Clerk, I have two packages here. Which is the one for tonight?
Both.
They're both the same thing.
Both are the same?
The same, yes.
I know, I know, but I want to be sure that it's a copy of the same.
Alrighty, Madam Manager, you're on. Go.
Thank you. I'll go through the summary briefly and then we'll get into the millage rate, Mr. Mayor, as you requested. Or you want to do it...
Hit the highlights of the budget, so we, so we know what we're talking about and then we'll talk about the millage rate briefly and then we'll go into public hearing.
The preliminary budget submittal was presented by the Office of the City Manager back in July, the second meeting in July, and I want to say it was July 20th, off the top of my head. That's for fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023. Preliminary changes occurred between the submittal, the preliminary submittal date and the tentative budget meeting. And basically, we were waiting for some numbers for our insurance renewal, retirement rates, workers' compensation premiums, generally unfunded mandates that we have to fund in the budget, and those numbers came in during the month of August. The proposed tax notices were sent out by Miami Dade County Office of Property Appraiser sometime mid to late August. Those notices contemplated the date, the time, and the venue for the tentative budget hearing. The tentative budget was scheduled for September 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM. That public hearing was held and the tentative budget was approved as submitted with the changes. And I had individual conversations with every member of the City Commission throughout the process, updating you on revenue sources and last-minute budgetary changes. The property taxes and ad valorem estimates came in on June 1st, prior to the submittal of the budget. This is provided to every municipality by the Office of the Property Appraiser and it's basically the tool that the manager's office or the finance director's office use to calculate what our expectations for revenue from real estate and property tax will be for the budget year. The city proposed a 3% millage rate reduction as suggested by the Office of Property Appraiser and our mayor, and the Office of, of the mayor. The millage rate, the current millage rate for this year ending September 30th is 6.8858. Of that, there is one mill dedicated to the City of West Miami Recreation Center for the operation year-round of our playground and park system. The proposed millage rate at the time, which is the tentative millage approved rate, is 6.6792, and that includes one mill that is dedicated by ordinance to the Rec Center. The value of a mill using the proposed millage rate represented at the time and was calculated as, at 95%, as defined by the Department of Revenue by TRIM, which is Truth, Truth in Millage, was $787,354. That is the value of the mill. There were 200 senior citizen families eligible to receive the additional homestead exemption. That's a decrease from the prior year. I think we were at nine, at 219. This year, we're at 200. The senior additional homestead exemption eligibility is based on total combined household, household income. The proposed general fund budget includes revenue projections that are made after careful review of actual receipts, unaudited at mid-year. That means as of March 30th of each year, we review our actual receipts or revenues and this is how we forecast or project what our revenues and expenses will be, both. Inflation costs are contemplated in our line items and it is unknown how recession will impact the city as of this presentation. And I maintain that. I mean, if you, if you listen to all economic reports, it is understood that we will be in some type of recession very soon if we are not already started in a recession. New revenues are earmarked or pledged for special projects, such as potable water improvement projects, grants applied for by the city. The proposed general fund budget totaled $8,303,698, or a decrease in the amount of $280,933 when comparing it to the, this fiscal year that ends September 30th, 2022. And I will stop and tell you why we have a budget that totals less than last year. As you know, impact fee money that was generated by the city that is not paid by the taxpayer, that we received from special use permits for planned development, play a huge role with our capital projects. When you transfer that money in, that cash into the, into the city's budget to assign it to special capital improvement projects, that basically pads your, your total bottom line, if you would, your general fund budget or any other fund that receives an allocation from impact fees. Last year, we had, our budget was higher in its total, in its totality because we had over a million dollars that have now gone on the books and they are earmarked for the weight room at the West Miami Recreation Center, which is a project that's getting off the ground now in the coming months and it's been awarded. That's why your budget is less this year. The general fund budget contemplates, contemplated a contingency fund at the time of the tentative presentation of $40,000 for unexpected contingencies. The general fund contemplated $100,000 in contingency fund for hurricane and/or pandemic needs. If that money is not used, praise, hopefully we'll never, we won't see a hurricane or another pandemic in our lifetime here, that money, if it's not used, will revert back to the city's reserves or it will be spent by approval of the commission on anything that's unforeseen that may come up. Generally, it reverts back to reserves. The general fund contemplates a $258,772 line item to add to the city's unrestricted reserves. Since the tentative budget, that amount has changed. Your book has the new totals because we had to add an expense of $20,000 to an operational account to fund the elevator doors that will be out of compliance by December of next year. So we had to entertain that this year. Let me go back to my notes here. We have contemplated all the unfunded mandates to include increases in the mandatory and compulsory contributions to the Florida retirement system. That is the pension plan for all city employees who work a budgeted, a regularly established budgeted position and meets the requirement of, of the rule that participates in the Florida retirement system. That's all, most of it is funded by the city. The employee contributes a 3% and that's set by law, that we don't make up those rules. That's set by law, by Florida statutes. Medical and life insurance program. Our medical and life insurance program over the years has increased. The city pays over a million dollars a year to maintain a medical and life insurance program for employees and their eligible dependents. They too, we pay a premium. Unemployment compensation expenses, general liability, property and auto insurance through the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. Our medical insurance and, and life insurance program, which life is no longer available to new employees, we did away with that about two years ago. But the program that still funds for these, for these insured personnel has consistently gone up 10% every year for the last three years because of COVID. That is the standard in the industry and I think we're below. The trend is like 12%. Our budget also includes recent contract negotiations with the South Florida PBA for our sworn police officers. It includes funding for an additional part-time police officer, which is now dedicated to the City of West Miami Recreation Center. He covers summer camp and after-school care. I think very few cities, if any, at least locally, have this type of service. It includes a set aside for public services, union negotiations, which, as you know, the public services employees recently voted to have, be represented by a union and we have to come to the table in good faith and negotiate with this union. So there's a set aside in the budget for that. It includes a general fund transfer in the amount of $339,792 in cash to the City of West Miami Community Center to fund the program. It adds to the allocation that is provided to us by the state of Florida for the program. The proposed general fund budget provides for attrition in some of the positions. It provides a 5% increase for all department directors and city employees, a minimum salary of $15 per hour for all full-time budgeted positions. This is a problem that we have had and we've had to address because we have recruiting and retention issues. We've had them, just like many other municipalities and the private sector. It also increased the salary of the city attorney to bring it closer to the level where our, our, our city attorney, who's on our retainer, he's not a city employee, he's on our retainer, that was provided for in the budget. A new position for public services, which was budgeted out of the Streets Division, was funded in this year's budget. The manager's office submitted a detailed, I want to say it's like 18-page memorandum to the mayor and city commission on Thursday, July 14, 2022, along with numerous exhibits that deal with the budget. Copies of the preliminary budget were uploaded to the city's website as required by the state and copies of the preliminary budget, tonight it is the final budget, are here. There, there are a public record and they are available to the general public. That concludes my presentation. Before the tentative budget hearing, we presented you with some changes to the budget, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, that basically, they're all highlighted in yellow that took you through those line items that require changes, like the issue of the elevator I just brought to your attention. Those, I left the preliminary page in your pocket so that you had a comparison, so you could see that line item from July 20th of this year, how it changed on September 6th, and that's what was approved and that is the document that you're working here tonight.
Thank you.
That's pretty much the, the bulk of the presentation.
Thank you. So now it's almost time to start up the public hearing, just right before you, you talk, so we can just contextualize what we're going to talk about. The, the millage rate that's being proposed this year, Madam Manager, is what? Read it out.
The millage rate for this year is 6.6792 and that includes one mill for the Recreation Center.
Right.
And it's a 3% reduction over last year's millage rate.
Right. So the, the idea, the idea going into this year's budget from my perspective was to make sure that with all the inflation that was going on, right, which is also affecting our budget, right, but is also affecting your property value because it's hitting the highest possible point that it can increase, which is 3%. My, my idea was to make sure that unlike in the last probably at least 15 years or not more, residents who have homestead exemptions don't pay a dollar more than they paid last year in taxes, right? That was the idea. Now, even with the 3% decrease in the millage rate, we had a surprise going into tentative budget. And that is that even though the property appraiser sent me a letter and sent all of us a letter saying, which is logical, that if you lowered the millage rate 3%, you won't have a, a single cent increase in property taxes for a homestead resident. That didn't happen. You guys got a notice that had a small increase, whether it was $9, $10, $14, right? So we went back and knew, how, how can that be? And what ended up happening, and the property appraiser has still not responded to our inquiries, we had a phone call and, and they couldn't explain it and we sent letters and they didn't send them back. They, they had a, you had a 3% increase in your assessed value, right? But you had a 4.3% increase in your taxable value. And no one can explain to me how that happens.
What's the difference?
No one can explain to you how, how you have a, a, a 3% increase in your assessed value, but your taxable value goes up. So what we did going into this meeting was we had looked at an additional 1.3% decrease in the millage rate, right? Which we have the number, what's, what's the number on that?
The millage rate, if, if a 1.3% is reduced to the, is added to the 3%, it would bring your millage rate to 6.5897 to include the Recreation Center mill that's dedicated.
Right. So that would be a total 4.3% reduction and it would basically wipe out any opportunity to pay any more than you paid last year in taxes, right? And the way I see it is it's a phase one because I do think that, you know, governments, we have to look at inefficiencies and invasions to look at where we can find money, but we also have to make sure that we do responsibly, right? So that was, that was my idea. That millage rate, that 1.3% hasn't been approved yet. It's going to be on the table today for discussion, but that, that was what was intended to be proposed, proposed tonight. With that being said, I will open this up to public hearing and we can start hearing from the public. The public hearing is now open. The public hearing is now open. And Madam Clerk, do you have speaker cards for the public, or how are we doing this?
None.
Okay, so we're just going to go however wants to come up first, and please, I ask you to, if you come up, please state your name and address for the record, and then let's, let's see how we can do this in organized fashion. Of course. Yeah, if you, I'm sorry, if you can.
Name and address for the record.
The mic.
Name and address for the record.
Yes.
I'm Mrs. Higginis, and I live at 5910 Southwest 10th Street. I actually lived here for 40 years. I bought my property in 1982, Jolanda Knowles and what. Can you please repeat what I was trying to write as you were speaking? The 3%, and then the people that haven't gotten back to you.
Yes, okay, sure. So the 3% went from, I made it to the milit this year tentatively, is 6.6, I'm sorry, these numbers, 6.6792, right? That was a 3% reduction, which was intended to match a 3% increase, which is your highest possible increase, which happened this year because of inflation being so high, your 3% increase in assessed value. Now, what happened, and we've discovered when the tentative announcements came out, is that there was actually a 4.3% increase in your taxable value of your house. And the property appraiser's office, which is who decides the value of your home countywide, has not been able to explain to me, or in the conversations that I've had with them and the manager in our office, which as the manager can attest was, I lost my cool a little bit. But the, and they haven't been able to respond in writing as to what, how your taxable value can be a higher increase than your assessed value. Now, just to, you know, so you see the difference, right? Your assessed value, let's say your assessed value is 200,000, right? That's before your homestead exemption, your maybe second homestead exemption. So that will lower your assessed value to each, to get to your taxable value. It still doesn't make sense as to why it would be have an additional 1.3 increase, 1.3% increase in your taxable value. It's not only West Miami, by the way. This happened countywide.
Countywide.
But we're playing like everyone else. We're trying to make sure that we have all the stats, and they weren't giving them. So that happened during tentative. So going into this meeting, I discussed with the manager and the finance director to see about lowering that additional 1.3% to a total of 4.3% reduction in the milit rate to match the taxable value increase in your homes for people who have homestead exemptions. For people who don't have homestead exemptions, who have investment properties, or who have commercial buildings or have apartments, they can get up to a 10% increase or more, and this doesn't really affect them except that they get a 4.3% decrease in their milit rate too. But their values can go, can go up exponentially.
Or up to 10, I can ask for stats.
Right, so it's, their value has no, has no, you know, relative cap to what it can go to. Yours is, yours supposed to be 3, I guess it's really 4.3. And, you know, the goal for me, and I'm sure my colleagues as well will get into a discussion after we hear from everyone, would be to make sure that homestead residents, in a year we have so much inflation, where our budget's getting affected too, don't get a single cent increase in dollars of how much they paid last year in taxes.
Well, thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Absolutely. Please, name and address the record.
Matthew Gossidis? You can take your pick, but 6286 Southwest 11th Street. I guess I appreciate the initial plan being that, I guess I appreciate on the face the plan being that homestead exemptions will not see an increase since 3% was originally understood to be what it would be. Moving forward, what is the actual plan for the 1.3? Are we going to get that 1.3? Or are we going to wait for these letters?
No, no, let me.
Are we going to get the 4.3?
Right, let me be very clear. When I say it hasn't been approved yet, that's because the way the budget works is we have to hear from the public, and then we're allowed to discuss what's on. But it will be, whatever society will be decided here tonight.
I think the public was in favor of the 3% because we were understanding, just like you, that the 3% would mean we didn't get a raise.
Right, and to be very clear to that point, when I say that, I lost my cool a little bit with the property appraiser's office, it's that the property appraiser had sent, and I know him, and he's a nice guy, but he sent a press release and a letter and explaining it in various different ways how a 3% decrease in your milit rate would mean that no increase in taxes for residents, no dollar increase in taxes for residents. He, I mean, he explained it in I don't know how many ways, and I'd be happy to present anyone with the press release, so you can read it yourself. It was, it was.
No, I mean, I get it, and so you planned contingent on that 3% being accurate, which apparently was off by 1.3.
Yes.
So moving forward, are we going to catch up to that 1.3 so that we can accurately tell our people that when homestead exemptions aren't going to be increased, they're not? Whether it's by a dollar or 50 cents or.
Right, so for example, yeah.
Because our words, I grew here 30 years, should mean something to our people.
Right, so for example, the last year.
Because it does, is what I was going to say.
Absolutely.
It has for 30 years.
Right, last year, your CPI index, your assessed value increase was 2.1%, right? So it didn't need to hit the cap of 3%. So if we would have lowered, last year the milit was flat, so there was an increase in, but I don't know how much for each individual house, but it was an increase yet last year, even though the milit rate was flat, right? But it was a 2.1% increase. Last year, he said, lower your taxes by 2%. This body did not, but others did, and it didn't have, it didn't have that 1.3% increase. It's, this is something that I don't, I really, and I truly am looking forward to understanding what it is, that is creating that 1.3, but it definitely has to do with the massive inflation that there was this year that wasn't last year.
Which has burdened everybody.
Everyone, right, including yourselves, including this government, including every, everything that has a bank account on this, on this country was burdened by it. Go ahead.
Just to add to what the mayor said, we were mentioning the homestead exemption, the assessed values could not go up above 3%. It's, he touched on the Consumer Price Index. There was 2.1.
2.1.
2.1 last year. The homestead exempt properties, the assessed value can go up above 3% or whatever that Consumer Price Index is, whatever the lower number is.
Okay.
So 3% is what it is now because the CPI now is saying 7%.
Yeah.
It's, so we're going to stay with the lower number, which is 3%.
Or 4.3.
Yeah, or, yeah, or apparently 4.3.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, Madam Manager. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a resident of the mic.
Just, if it ends up being 4.3, are we going to work to getting our mil down to 4? Because you did already work to get it to 3, so that you could match it, so that it wouldn't increase? Or, so are we going to get it down to 4.3?
So I guess what I'm, what we're saying is, we're not, it's not even the mil down to 4.3. We're getting it down a percent, by 4.3%, right? So that, that would be done, that decision would be had tonight, following this, following hearing all of you. That would be happening tonight, and that decision is what's finalized and put into and sent out. So you will know, you will have to leave and find out what happened. That gets decided now.
What does the 1.3 come from? Does that come from like our gym, or does that come from?
No, no.
A reduction of reserves in the amount of 70,469.
Yeah, what she says, reduction in reserves, we're not going, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
We're not going into the reserves we have and going and scavenging there to try to work that out. These are, we have an amount of reserves that we're putting into our unrestricted reserves, and this will just lower from the additional amount that we're putting in. So we're still putting in a significant amount of reserves.
Yes, sir.
We're just not going to put as much in to make sure that we, that we stay in line with what we say.
Well, I appreciate you guys. I definitely want to say, and just take a moment, it's a little bit of an aside, but anyone who knows me, my family knows what we've gone through in this extended period of time, the last couple of years. And I definitely wanted to say that I appreciate the city. I appreciate its members because in the beginning, we had a prayer, and we stayed in that prayer that we wish well for everybody. And I think we've done a pretty good job of actually living up to that. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we have speaker cards in order, so someone's got to take initiative. Who, has anyone in the public wished to speak? Does anyone have any questions or comments aside from the milit rate on any other item? And I know, I know, I know Ms. Sardini has to speak.
My name is Maria Evans. I live at 1840 Southwest 65th Avenue in the beautiful West Miami, Florida, 33155. And believe it or not, you think I should know these things? The milit rate, is it going down? Usually, doesn't it stay the same, or does it fluctuate up and down constantly? I should know this was a real.
Sure, I think that's a good question. So I actually had the manager pull yesterday the data because I was curious on the milit rate since 2010, right? In 2010, the milit rate that was approved was 6.7376, 76, right? The following year, it was increased to, from 2011, 2012, to 6.8858. And it stayed at that milit rate until this year. So the milit rate hasn't been touched in about 12 years. So this is the first time we actually touch it in that time period, and we're actually lowering it to the point before it was increased. So lower than the point before it was increased. And the milit rate, you're asking if it gets touched every year? Every government has its own way of doing it. So the county, for example, has avoided lowering, touching the milit rate for the last, for the last, since, basically since the recession, they haven't touched the milit rate.
Metro Dade.
Metro Dade County. This year, they lowered it by 1%. Now, what that means is you are, you are getting a dollar, you know, dollar-wise increase in your county taxes, right? Because they didn't lower it 4.3%, right? So they're lowering the milit rate by 1%, but you're still going to experience a tax increase in the amount you pay. Right, so every government has its own way of doing it. My perspective might be different than my colleagues' perspective on how we approach it. My perspective is I don't mind flirting with the milit rate yearly. To me, it matters what the resident pays, not what the milit rate is, right? So if the milit rate was, we reduced it by 50%, but your property value went up 50%, then it doesn't really matter what the milit rate was initially, right? So I don't, my perspective is I don't mind flirting with it. It's more about what the resident actually pays in dollars. But every government and every elected official has their own philosophy behind how you approach that. Our city hasn't, hasn't touched the milit rate in over 10 years. This is the first time it does so. But it's not a usual thing or unusual thing.
That's what I thought, because I know that, I know the City of West Miami, I mean, City of Miami has a very high milit rate in that we're pretty much up there, more than Coral Gables or Pine Grass.
Yeah, and a lot of that.
We're a smaller county, but I love everything that you guys.
And a lot of, yeah, and a lot of that too is, you see a lot of these cities, newer cities, and you see the milit rates, and you look at them, they're very low, and you start to wonder how that is. Some of them, for example Miami Lakes, they have, and they are able to keep it low because they have entirely contracted out city, right? And there's pros and cons to that, right? But also, a lot of these cities don't have their own police departments, which means that they have to pay a separate line item for that, right? So either way, you're getting, you're getting taxed. It just matters where, what line item you're getting taxed in, right? So not everything is as simple as it seems on your, on your taxes. I think we're probably average on the scale. Obviously, I think that one of the things that makes us hire is having our own police department, something that I think frankly, I wouldn't trade, I would trade having a slightly higher milit for that. You know, you see residents in Shenley Park, and they have a beautiful community, but they always have to worry about public safety because they don't have a substation nearby. So it's, every government has a different situation.
Thank you for explaining that, Mr. Mayor. Something else I'm wondering, I'm curious. The reduction 3%, what, I mean, I don't know if you guys are, are we voting to reduce it more? Or, I mean, is it affect, you may have to explain that to me again, I know.
I'd love to.
I should, I mean, and then I'm going to sit down. We're going to get off. So of course, everybody's going to want the 4% reduction. But please tell us, like, why? Is it because the, obviously, I sell real estate. Our market value keeps going up, my taxes, of course, is going to go up. I moved here in 2014, and, you know, I started very low, and I'm paying a lot of money for a $269,000 sale. I mean, I'm very happy. I'm very, very happy with all you there. So, but I see it keeps going up.
Yeah.
So that's why I asked, does milit rate keep going? I know the assessed values are, go up.
So, but the assessed value's going to go up, and we're going to, well, I don't want to say we're going to, because I, again, have to hear from our colleagues, and we have to discuss it and vote on it tonight. But hopefully, my, from my view, and we will, we will match your, the value increasing, because it's, thank God, capped by homestead. The value increasing will match it in our decrease in milit, so that it levels out and you don't actually experience a tax increase.
At least for the next year, 2022.
Every year, we'll have to do this, this, this give and take, but this year, there's pros to property values being increased a lot, right? So even though we will decrease the milit rate and make sure that the residents who are homestead residents don't pay more in taxes, we will still experience a revenue increase to the city because of the commercial properties and the investment properties.
Thank you, thank you so much for your promise.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Absolutely, go ahead. Name and address the record.
Eduardo LaMasa, 6460, 6460 Southwest 12th Street. You just said commercial properties and the apartment buildings.
Yep.
And we really haven't touched our milit rates in approximately 10 years. Revenues have gone up. And last time I was here, was a while ago, and since then, we've had a ton of apartment buildings and everything else. Where has that money gone? That's all I'd like to know.
Sure, and that's a fair question. So.
I'll take my seat.
No, that's a fair question. And I like to start by saying, just because we're lowering the milit to a point that we're not increasing your taxes, I don't view that as a pat-on-the-back moment, to be honest with you. I view it as something that we had to do to make sure that we are in line. First of all, well, I'm in line with what I say. But number two, I'm, we're also in line with what's the reality of the economic situation of the city. Part of that money was, and, I mean, again, and I, may know or disrespect my colleagues, who I know we had discussions. I wasn't in government when, and when the villages were approved. There was a lot of pros and cons and everything else with development. I wasn't necessarily in favor of a lot of the stuff. There's pros to it, there's, there's pros and cons to everything in life, right? So there's, you know, I won't say that there was, you know, we're going to see in the budget, there's no big spot where all the money went to, right? I know because I've looked at it a few times. There's, you're not going to find some big increase and it goes, oh, that's where the money went. A big part of it was getting reserves to the city. The unrestricted reserve balance went up a lot after the development.
Excuse me, by how much, what percentage?
Sure, well, you know what? Let me hand it over to the people with the numbers.
Okay, thank you. 10 years ago, and I want to go back, 10 years ago, the city had about $50,000 in reserves, which is dangerously low, dangerously. At that point, when the developments came, came to the city, and as they were approved, it generated around, each development back debt was generating about $225,000 in real estate and property taxes per building, okay? So we had to, we had some expenses because we have to maintain, had to maintain the level of service that was in place because we weren't going to take any service away from residents that were here. We had to increase to accommodate growth. So some of it went into operational expenses, and some of it went to reserves. As of the last fiscal year, we're really happy to report, and I got to tell you, this commission, and I think the administration has been very diligent in trying to save nickels and dimes. We were at $1.7 million in reserves, which is a healthy amount.
Can you explain what reserves are?
Reserves are unrestricted reserves. That's like you putting money after you have paid all your bills and met all your unfunded mandates and planned for contingencies. That's the money that you have in your savings account. It's liquid cash. So the city has been, in 10 years, in a small city like ours, you have to understand that we have done a lot in a very small period of time. So we went from 50,000 to 1.7. I consider. I can sit here today and very comfortably inform you that it's not audited, this is not an audit number, but hopefully, by the end of September of this year, when the auditors come in, we should be at $2 million. And the finance director can vouch for that, because she's the one that handles the, the money and the finances for the city.
So, so, Madam Manager...
But we will be at $2 million.
Yes, I'm pressing or can I...
Which would put us, at a level with an $8 million budget, it's going to put us at a level that, God forbid, an emergency happens, a very bad hurricane happens, at least we can hire a contractor to come in and pick up debris, even though we claimed that money from FEMA. But with $50,000, we cannot meet any, any emergencies. We would have to go out to a bank and borrow money. And, and so, now we're at a point where we have unrestricted reserves after meeting all of our obligations.
So, Madam Manager, to that point, I think it's, it's good to get some of these questions out. The, how much money do we lose currently because of leaks in our water pipes?
We, we average from $80,000 to $100,000 a year in losses.
In losses? Just because of leaks to the water pipes? So, when you see those efforts on, on where the, where changing out the potable water pipes, a lot of it's because of the old pipes, but a lot of it is because we're actually supposed, the, the water revenue is, is actually supposed to be profitable to the city. It's actually supposed to bring in money. And instead, it's been, it's been draining us for many, many years. I happen to report that this commission, administration, has done a very good job in Tallahassee and the federal government, to make sure that we don't take, we don't have to go to a special assessment like we did for the sewer. So, we haven't had to go to a special assessment. We've put actually very little money comparatively, from general funds even, to fixing that problem. We've gotten, this year alone, the city was awarded $2 million in appropriation from the federal, from the state government, thanks to Senator Garcia and Representative Busta Cabrera. And $3 million, which is still to come in, but it's signed already, in the federal budget as an earmark that was sponsored by, represented by Congresswoman Salazar. So, this year, there was a total of $5 million awarded in appropriations just to potable water, which is a very, very expensive system to fix. That's in addition to 1.3 million that we got in the last couple of years in Tallahassee. Now, that's, that's pretty significant, considering the last 15 years, I don't think we actually got awarded a dime in appropriations from the state or federal government.
That's correct.
So, we're actually moving in the right direction on that.
And we also, to add to that, Mr. Mayor, we have money from the American Rescue Act, which is going to go towards potable water.
Right. So, the idea is to fix that project, that, that very quickly, so that instead of losing $80,000 to $100,000 a year, we actually go back to that system being profitable, and being able to not only maintain itself, but actually add into the system and maintain it itself, and also add into the funds of the city. So, that's, that's, you know, these are the kind of planning steps that we're trying to take to, to make a more resilient budget, but hopefully, in addition with that infrastructure and finding innovations and inefficiencies, keep moving forward to, to look towards, my, my goal would be to actually go and start lowering taxes. I know that's a bad word to, to administration, because they're very protective of the money and very protective of the, the security of the city. But as, from the political side, I think that's always what I'm always striving to do, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna stop until I find ways to do it. So, go, Madam Mayor, I know you had something you wanted to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we finished Phase 1 of the potable water project. That's in the northeast part of the city, which is the oldest part. So, all the water mains and all the feeding lines from the mains to the, to the properties, they all have been changed. So, we're not gonna incur any water leaks there. So, you know, our, our savings started adding up. I also wanted to point something out, that a lot of people don't take under consideration, and that is that the money that you pay in property taxes, not all that money stays here in the city of West Miami. You're paying for fire rescue, you're paying for libraries, you're paying for jails, you're paying for airports, you're paying for the school board, you're paying for Jackson Memorial Hospital Trauma Center, you're paying for a host of other things. So, so, Madam Manager, what is the percentage rate that we keep out of the money?
On average, I think it was something like 28% as of last fiscal year, 28 to 30% of your total tax bill.
So, just consider that. When you write a check to Miami Dade County, the money that stays here, that makes this city churn, is 28%. And with that, we make do year after year after year after year.
So, anybody, anybody have questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead. Servios. Name and address the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. Gus Sabayo, 6141 Southwest 18th Street. I'd like to thank you all for your continued leadership and for thinking of the residents first. I think the 3% reduction is spectacular, I think we all appreciate that, and por favor, no ma ta king, pero... The proposal to increase that reduction to 4.3, once again, I think it's spectacular. My only concern is, we gotta be fiscally a bit conservative, make sure that we're not reducing it too much, because maybe $5, $10 per house per year reflects a $70,000, I think, reduction to the, to the reserves. So, just, you know, I will defer to your expertise. You know, you have a great staff, and I'm sure they're gonna provide you with great numbers. But that's just my, my big concern is, you know, 3% is amazing, 4%, 4.3 is even greater, but I'm concerned on whether that may just be trying to, you know, we're, we're trying to tighten our belt a bit too much, and that may have a lingering effect.
So, you, you can throw tomatoes at him.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. No, I, I appreciate, that's, that's, that's obviously, and like I, like I say, the administration has, is pretty tight on, on how they operate. They, they don't like it when I, when I come up to them and ask for more decreases, and, and we have our own little internal fight in there, and, which is good. It's, it's a good balance, it's in, I don't view that as a bad thing. And, but I, I appreciate that, and I think, I think that our fights were long this year on that, so I think that's, that's a, that's a good thing, and I think it ended up with a, with a good result because of that. But I, I certainly appreciate what you're saying on being conservative on the city finances fund, make sure that we're resilient.
Yeah. Whichever way we go, I'm sure we're all gonna be doing great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you, Gus.
Mr. Gustavo.
Yes.
You are a nice guy.
I try.
Nice, and you are elegant, and I see you happy, smiling.
That's only because I came directly from another board. That's the only reason why I'm dressed like this.
But I have a question for all of us, all of us, including the table. To me, happened this. I move around the county a lot, and I'm out of the county too, and I'm pretty sure you feel proud when you said that you live in West Miami. Because 99% of the people that you telling, "Where you living? West Miami?" The people tell you, "Oh, West Miami, it's a nice town. It's not big, but it's a nice town, right?"
Yeah.
So, I tell you, we may have any defects, we may have problems, but I personally, I know people, I know, we feel very proud to live here, because residents, the government, the police department, public works, everybody works well, and we make, we are a nice community, a decent community, right? And the people respect us all over the county, and all over the South Florida, whatever you talking about, South Miami.
Yeah.
The people love you. Right?
And, and let's take the opportunity, Mr. Sabayo is a recent appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, and he's a very experienced, the land use attorney with the city of Coral Gables currently, so...
Thank you.
Go ahead. Name and address the record.
6031 Southwest 12th Street. Vivian Rivera.
Missela.
Missela, my old home. Used to be Missela. Now it's Miss Rivera. It's still the same person. I wanna thank Ivan Chavez for explaining. I got a, a paper from a neighbor, you know, like, I got this, we're gonna get, you know, the taxes going up and all that, so you get it, and you go, wow! And not everybody got it, so I just think that we need to have a, I know you have a city of West Miami Facebook, and I'm always looking at it, so I went to Ivan and asked him what's going on, 'cause not everybody got it. Now I understand why not everybody got it, but I think it would be nice just for all of us to communicate a little better. Although I know you do a great job, but at least for everybody to be on the same page, and we all know what's going on. Because, thank you, Mr. Chavez, thank you, Ivan, 'cause now I understand everything. And I, I think I should be coming to more, so I understand more. So, thank you, and I just think that we should, just a little more communication, that's all.
So, Ivan, I know your name was mentioned, so...
Very, very...
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Suarez.
Everybody knows you here, in this city.
Yeah, but they know me by Missela.
Well, let me tell you, in the internet, you may read sometimes, somewhere, people, and sometime with the big titles, huh? Some people said that the earth is not round, that the earth, earth is flat.
Exactly.
So, everything you read on the internet is not 100% correct.
Yeah, but it wasn't the internet, it was a neighbor that sent it to me, that's why.
Commissioner Chavez, I know your name was mentioned, so I'll let you, I'll let you speak tonight, and I thank you. But I think your, for, your point is, is, is right, and I almost didn't like your second point, which is, that you have to be here to know what's going on. That's not...
Well, I mean, I mean to participate, is what I mean, I'm sorry.
I know, I understand, but that, that's, to, you know, I'm trying to get to, to a point where you don't have to be here at 7:30 and 9:00 to know what's going on, and you don't have to, I don't, I really don't want to see you at City Hall if you have the means not to be, right? And I don't mean I don't wanna see you.
I know, I got you.
I mean, I, I'd rather you not to come to City Hall to deal with an issue. So, that's, you know, your point on the transparency front in terms of communication is well-taken.
That's all, it's nothing.
And, and I think, I think we have to do a better job always, but, but on this also, to communicate that. Chavez?
So, Miss Rivera was my second grade teacher, I think?
Or Missela.
Missela is a kindergarten teacher, so... Almost 30 years ago at this point, I don't know how, because you're not even 30 yourself, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right.
To a 16-year-old.
So, when she reached out to me, I actually had practice, 'cause I got home, and my wife started yelling at me, "You're raising taxes!" So, she, she got that same information, right? So, that just relates to you guys, that we are just like you guys. Before April, I was sitting out there with you guys.
Exactly.
When I got on this side, I got to see the intricacies of running a city. Our manager, our finance director, our whole staff does a fantastic job, as they just relayed. And we're all up here just trying to do right by our home. Commissioner Suarez hit it right on the head, we are all very proud to live here, but we do have a city to run. We have the good fortune, I like to say, the fortune of being sitting up here, even though, you know, we have to deal with some things at times. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're all just trying to do right by the city, keep that pride going. I love seeing all of you here. Whenever there's an issue, we are all willing to hear it out and speak on it, just like I did with you. And thank you for being here, and thank you for that shout-out.
And thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to say, before, before we wrap up and see if anyone else wants to speak, and start, oh, go ahead. He's always approaching the mic, name and address the record, but I just like to say, it's, it's not a lot of cities where you get this environment where, without, without the insults and back and forth, and so it's, that's, we're very lucky here. Go ahead.
Good evening, Ivan Chavez, 5911 Southwest 9th Terrace. I just wanted to get up here and lower expectations, since Mr. Sabayo's came up here dressed really nice. I wanted to bring you all back to earth here. I, I wanna touch on what Mr. Sabayo said a little bit. It's not a bad thing, everybody's household, everybody, one of the two in the couple get ideas, and they bounce it off each other, and sometimes exuberance and enthusiasm has to be checked, right? Depending on what your budgetary constraints are in, in your home. Here, we have those same kind of constraints, right? We're a small city, you've already said basically a quarter from every dollar is all we keep, right? So, whatever brings revenue in is very important. As an example, the, the buildings that, it's a 50/50, whether you love them or hate them, they bring revenue, right? We don't have big giant parks that, you know, with a huge facilities like other cities that bring in a lot of revenue. For what revenue we do bring in, for that 25 cents on the dollar, I mean, you get garbage picked up twice a week, right? If anybody's been through a hurricane here in West Miami, you know that before the Gables is done...
Right, right.
...our guys are done. All right? We have...
Like a city, like a city, the residents have each other's back.
Everybody looks after each other.
I don't get paid to drag those trees out in the street, but I do it.
So, we have police officers that, for the most part, you'd swear live in your closet, 'cause you call them up, and they're there. Look, they're, they're off protecting somebody right now, they just took off, right? But, when it comes to the millage, I think it's absolutely the right idea to lower the millage, and probably the right idea to lower the extra 1.3% because of the situation we're in. We're in a very strange place in our country's history, all right? We're throwing the word recession around, and technically, we're in a recession that hasn't been seen since, you know, some of us were young, when we had to keep an eye on our cars, 'cause people were stealing gasoline out of it, right? We, there's a lot of us that went through that stuff. So, right now, it's, it's justifiable. That being said, you know there's probably repercussions down the road when the county does stuff that we cannot control, right? The property values, if they assess them lower, what happens? What happens that, at that point, I want us that are here, talking about this and asking questions of you all, and thankful that you guys are lowering, you know, millage rates, if at some point you are faced and forced to raise millage rates, I want us to all also be able to come here and, and say, listen, we get it. When we were going through hard times, you guys took care of us. You didn't do like every other city out there, or the county, and stick it to their residents. You guys took care of us, all right? I'm not affected by this, but people are, and people are paying more for everything. So, this is the balance that I just wanted to point out, that I'm aware, and I'm sure a lot of people are aware, that at some point down the road, if the county does what the county does, 'cause they're never gonna lose, they're the house, okay? We lose, they're the house. If you are faced and forced to possibly raise millage rates to make up the difference, so we don't go, you know, into the black hole of debt, that I for one, understand that and trust you that it's the last resort if you gotta do it. That's all I'm saying. I think, I think we're all fairly happy, I'll just speak for myself, I'm happy with, with the outcome and with the decorum here, and it's West Miami. You know, this is what we do. We talk about stuff, we're not throwing shoes like other cities, okay? So, thank you very much for what you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I wanna bring up an analogy that I think of a lot when I sit here, and when it comes to the budget. The city of West Miami is a lot like a baby. And a lot of you have had children, and when they were babies and they had a fever, boy, you really had to do something really quick. You had to give them medication to, to, to drop the fever. Babies don't have a lot of surface area to dissipate the heat, so they don't, they decompensate really fast. Now, an adult, they have a lot of surface area. They can get sick, and they can be sick for a week, for a month, they can withstand that fever. But the city of West Miami is like that little baby, okay? I've sat here and I contemplated lowering taxes, and this is the same analogy that I thought of, okay? What if I lower the taxes, okay, and then I lower and save everybody $25 a year, okay? That's nothing. That's nothing. You can't even fill your tank, a quarter of a tank, with $25 today. So, what happens if there's a real estate downturn? Now, we have to sit here and we have to look at each other and say, "Well, you know what? We're going to have to raise taxes." And what are you all going to do? You're all going to point the finger, that's the first thing you're all going to do, and say, "What are you doing? You're raising my taxes." You know, so, for the last 12 years, we have not raised the millage. In other words, your taxes have not been affected by what this table has decided. You know, we've been able to make do with that 28% that we keep. We have a police department, we have a sanitation department, now we have a permitting department, we have a recreational department, a second to none. You know, this is a great place to live. We're the second lowest in crime in all of Dade County, you know, thanks to our great police department. This is a great place to live. I've lived here for 37 years, you know, most of my life, and this is one reason why I sit here and I do what I do. I'm not a politician. You know, I think a lot of you know me, I'm not a politician. I don't care what I say, I don't care if I say the wrong thing, I don't care if I offend you, I don't care if you vote for me. But, as long as I sit here, I am going to make the decision that makes more sense, okay? Just the fact that we can possibly have a hurricane, okay, and not having the funds to be able to clean up this city, it worries me, it troubles me. In the past, we've had to scramble and get a line of credit to be able to do that, and that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and then we got to pay an interest on that, you know? So, we end up spending more money, you know? Actually, you know, we've had a great administration, and now we're going to just about have $2 million in reserves. So, I want you all to think, you know, about what Mr. Sebaio said. If we lower that 1.25, what is it, 1.25, 1.23? That's $70,000. That represent to each one of you maybe $5, okay? Five bucks, that's a gallon of gasoline. So, the city is $70,000. That's a lot of money for that baby. It doesn't matter where it goes, it's $70,000. That's a lot of money, please! That's a lot of money, that's a lot of money for the city of West Miami having the type of budget that we have. So, with that said, I'm not going to say anything else. Thank you.
Name and address to the record again.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, of course.
Matthew? Of course you are.
Of course you are. I just didn't want to create a back and forth.
I thought we could have a really good moment, especially since we were, where we could, you know, hold two conversations or ideas at the same time. I wasn't trying to be rude, I was trying to give you the other side of that coin, so then you could understand why someone would think that $70,000. How much do we put into the reserves, if you don't mind me asking every year? I'm assuming it's greater than $70,000?
This year, as, if you don't contemplate the 1.3% over and above the 3%, we had budgeted $213,000 to go into reserves.
So, minus the 70, we're still positive?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, what I was trying to then give you is, you're saying $5 in my pocket, eh, is eh, but we get 70. The $5 in my pocket is something that I'm going to be using because it's tangible today. The 70 on the reserves is, if we get hit by a hurricane, we're good. And we're good, like Chavez said, and has done, by the way, because you raised one hell of a human being right there, both of you guys, I mean, both of you guys. But, we come together, we come together, and we do it. So, that $5 is tangible in my pocket today, means a lot to me today, whether or not I get hit by a hurricane tomorrow. And so, I, that, I was offering you the other side of that coin, to where you're saying, "Hey, 70,000, Matt, we're going to need it," which, okay, I understand, I run a home, I get it. I'm also telling you that $5, we need it.
So, and I didn't mean to, when I said the back and forth, I just can't have people screaming from the chairs, because it's a public meeting, so we have to record things.
I'm old school, so.
Yeah, I get it. So, if anyone has, if no one has any more comments, I know a big portion of the room, go ahead, please.
Good evening, and I want to thank you all.
Name and address to the record, please, sorry.
My name is Roberto Uguis, I'm a new resident, only been here a year.
The address.
6440 Southwest 21st Street, and I really want to thank you all for the great job you've done in this city. I just have a question, and I asked the previous code enforcement officer, in regards to the canisters. I see a lot of canisters with no lid, I see them with bags on top of the, you know, overloaded, the bags are not leak-proof, so they create an environmental hazard for the, in the ground, you know, leachies and so on. And he told me that you guys don't have an ordinance to make the homeowner have the proper can, like we have the blue can from the county for recyclables. We don't have that green can, you know, and people just put out two or three cans with no lid, and they throw the garbage on the street.
Yeah.
It doesn't look nice, you know, and it's not environmentally friendly.
So, I've had this, you know, I had a lot of discussions at people's doors last year during the election on this particular, with the issue of people putting out the bags without the cans at all. I do believe there's an ordinance on that. I don't know if there's an ordinance on how many cans or the size of the can, I think there might be even one, there is, correct? There's a size. I, you know, we have the public risk director here, and, you know, Mr. Penna, if you'd like to address this point.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And by the way, I concur with the two gentlemen, and you got to be realistic. Nobody wants to get higher taxes, but you need funds in order to have, you know, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. The Code of Ordinances has regulations on all the placement of garbage cans, size, lids, improper placement, so anything that we see, we actually provide them a courtesy notice first. The garbage truck driver has notices to put out so that they know that they're required containers with lids on.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to take this opportunity, while I have a group of residents in the room, to introduce our new code enforcement officer. If you could just quickly introduce yourself, I know we're straight from the budget for a second, but if you could please just quickly introduce yourself, so, you know, I think he has a good perspective on collaboration before, you know, being punitive, which I think is correct.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Manager, Administrator, Staff, and Citizens. My name is George Alvarez, and I'm the code enforcement officer. I started working on the garbage can ordinance a few days ago, maybe some of you here have had the notices put on your doors already. So, if you haven't gotten one, you should be getting one soon. If you're not placing your can in the correct location after the collection. In addition to that, I'm going to start handing out courtesy notices to those who don't have lids, and there's a lot of citizens that don't have lids, so if you don't have any, I think it's a good time to make a quick trip to Home Depot and get them. So, yeah, so, so to answer your question in regards to the garbage cans, I am working on that right now. I have other duties to attend to, as well as inspections and other ordinances, but I am working on that. Usually on Wednesdays and my Saturdays, there shouldn't be any cans visible to the street, because those are non-collection days. So, if your garbage was collected on Monday, I'll pass by on Tuesday, and your cans should be behind your fence line, out of sight, okay? So, the ones that I see in front, those are the ones that I'm going to hand courtesy notice, okay? It's not a fine, it's just a courtesy notice. The phone number's there for you to call me if you have any questions, and I'll walk you through that in case you're not sure, I've already had a few phone calls in reference to that, so I am working on that.
Thank you. You can take, no, you can take your seats, right? Thank you, I appreciate you. Name and address to the record, please.
Nicole Suri, 6540 Southwest 17th Street. I have a question about the garbage.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, so we all need to have tops on our garbages? I mean, that's ridiculous.
What about if it rains?
Um, well, I love my garbage men, that I go out there when I hear them, and I bring them water bottles on the days that they come and pick up, and I make sure that my bags are tied in a knot and in my garbage can. So, it's very easy for them to throw it in. Doesn't need a top, because you know what happens with the tops? The tops are thrown around, the wind moves them, I mean, like, really?
Mr. Penna, I see you in the back, I'm sorry, you don't have to sit down, but I just want to address that point. What is the, if there is one, what is the reasoning on the lid requirement?
Well, the requirement is, garbage can has to have a lid because plastic garbage bags are not a requirement. So, any garbage displaced inside the can, which some people do without garbage bags, will get wet, and will drop all over the street once he tries to lift it. Plus, it gets heavy, the can gets heavy.
So, a plastic bag?
Right. Well, we'll have these discussions, I appreciate you, I do want to.
I mean, more importantly would be our sidewalks.
Yeah, and I like hearing these, we'll discuss this one in private, because this is a bunch of time, I didn't want to make these introductions, and, but I do like the fact, when I hear some issues that are kind of interesting, because I do understand the lid issue, the lids, I see the value for having the lids, and I see, I know that lids get lost all the time because of wind, and I mean, I've experienced it myself, so that's something we'll sidebar on, and we'll discuss it. I know we have, on the commission meeting, because we're not done tonight when we end budget, we have to do another commission meeting on some things. We have other issues regarding code enforcement, on hedges and things of that nature. So, but we'll sidebar on that, and I appreciate you. Does anyone else have any questions, concerns? I think most of the room has been able to speak. All right. So, with that, I know the city attorney's not here, so Madam Manager, do we have to close the public hearing now?
You do, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more public comment.
Last chance on the budget, you will have another chance to speak on the commission meeting if you choose to stay for that.
Any more questions?
Any more questions? Public hearing is now closed. And next item.
Yes, so, Item N, public hearing on the final city budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 has been covered. Item 11N, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, establishing the 2022 final millage rates upon all real and personal property within the city limits of the payments of the amounts appropriated in the 2022-2023 final budget.
So, I'm going to do something here, and I'm going to hand over the gavel to the Vice Mayor, because I want to make a motion on, providing the number on the 1.3% reduction.
The 1.3% reduction will take the millage to 6.5897, and this includes the 1 mill for the recreation center.
All right, I'd like to make a motion on the additional 1.3% reduction for the millage rate, to be the millage rate that was just stated by the manager. That's a motion to approve that millage. There needs to be a second or not.
This is, just to be clear.
This is what we're talking about all night?
I'm sorry. I was looking at this. I was trying one of these. Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Madam Manager, the number again?
Um, the number 6.5897 includes 1 mill for the West Miami Recreation Center.
So, I'd like to make a motion for the millage rate to be 6.5897 for this coming fiscal year.
So, that's the 3% that we had considered, plus 1.25?
The 1.3% that we've been discussing all night.
It's 1.3?
Mm-hmm.
So, that would bring it to 4.3?
4.3.
And that would represent around $70,000?
$70,469 less.
Less going into reserves.
In revenue, which we would recommend that you reduce reserves by that amount, if that is the way the commission wants to go.
And it would create the cost-neutral environment that we've been discussing all night, frankly.
Motion.
That's a second. I passed over the gavel, we have a motion and a second. You have a decision to call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca?
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'd like to withdraw for a second for discussion, go ahead.
No, so, I would like to say, you know, we mentioned some of the funds that have been coming into the city over the last year or so, since the new Diaz has, you know, gotten together, and I do feel that I agree with the mayor, that we are going to be coming up with different sources of revenue. You know, we're going to be trying to be innovative in that respect, and there are people that are struggling at the moment, although, you know, I don't know exactly how much everybody's property taxes are going to be going up. There are a couple of people that could be affected by this. So, as my father mentioned, at the moment, I am in favor of doing this, to go along with what the mayor's proposing, with the idea that everybody is aware that at some point in the near future, there is that possibility that we're going to have to raise them again. And I understand that at the moment, we could be seen as the bad guys, but just remember this moment, because we do want to do what we can to help people in the moment, right? We're all up here together, we all are residents of this city, there is a budget to maintain, and our administration's been doing an excellent job doing that. But at the moment, I would like to go along with what the mayor's proposing, knowing that at some point, we're going to have to address this again, more than likely, but hopefully, by that time, we do have some innovative ways of bringing more revenue to the city, and then this isn't an issue. So, with that being said, I will, there has been a motion and a second, I believe. I'll pass it.
Madam Clerk, can you please?
Okay.
Call the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Blanes?
And I vote yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you. Hey, look at that. Next heard, next item. I'm sorry, we have a.
Please give me a minute, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, what's the?
Que te lo pongas alante, no me lo.
Small say. Dejen un segundito para que nosotros puedan votar en estos dos, y o sea un break antes que el comité de la sesión. Yeah, yeah, we'll do it right after, right after, these two are just. Thank you, everyone, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No vemos, va, baby, hasta luego.
We have two items to go on this.
Entonces ahora, we serve.
We have two items.
Ya los quites los menos, ya los menos han sido quitados, pero es. Ya eso se hizo.
Luciano.
Ya el día, ya se oyó, ya este aire se va a continuar.
The millage rate's ready to go.
Estamos aquí, en el presupuesto, aquí. Ya esto pasó, esto, ahora vamos a esto, todavía faltan estos. Cuánto, Luli? Esto ya pasó, faltan estos. 325.
All right, we're all square? All right, Madam Clerk, Commissioner, Vice Mayor. Next item, please.
Yes. Item 11O, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the 2022-2023 final budget.
We got a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Blanes?
Second by Commissioner Blanca.
Second by Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
I vote yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you, and next item?
Yes, Item 11P, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the final Water Enterprise Fund budget for the year 2022-2023, in the sum of $5,173,233, by Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Vice Mayor Blanes, and a second by Commissioner Chavez. That's before you.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go to the original order of the agenda?
Yeah, there's an item here.
We have public hearings, we have.
Consent agenda.
But let me, let me get this. But let me, let me get this item deferred into the next commission meeting.
Item 12A?
Item 12A, let's defer that to the next commission meeting so I can finalize some of the things.
Okay. Do you know that?
Thank you. The next item on this?
Okay, so going back to the original order of the agenda, next item is item 5, public comments.
Is anyone here for public comments?
No, they are gone.
No, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, actually, we do. You see, this we got asked.
I have a question. It's more a question than anything else. One of the other items that's on the agenda, when it gets called, will we have an opportunity to speak or should I include my comment during the public comment?
Which item is it?
I believe it's 11D and E, the same item?
11D and E?
The appeal of a variance.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, you have the opportunity to speak. Go back to the regular, where the agenda, public hearings, public, sorry, public comments. There's, seeing none. Next item?
Item 6, report of the City Manager.
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report to you that the state agency, as we know it, the Florida Department of Environmental Regulation, has signed and executed the agreement, which is an amendment that will enable us to start drawing from the $2 million, as you reported, that we received as a state of Florida appropriation for the potable water. So, we're very eager and I sent that to the city engineer, which was basically a notice to proceed, if you would. The next item, I will reserve until the issue of the Halloween celebration comes up, which Commissioner Chavez has on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 7, report of the City Attorney.
Excuse me.
None this evening. Item 8, report of the City Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
You should have in your pocket a updated memo, as I like to do from time to time, of updated projects. So, I guess I'll go over just a few of the projects and see the status that we're at, particularly two items that I will make note of. On the potable water projects, as you heard from the manager, we just were awarded our grant for the next phase. So, I'll be working with the manager and putting together proposal to get started on that work. Phase 1B, you'll be seeing today, is on the agenda for that portion of the project, which is moving forward now. And on phase 2, hopefully before the end of the year, we'll be going out to procurement on that one. And early, early next year, have something before you guys to get started on that project. That one's currently in design. So, with the project that we just got, we're actually gonna complete pretty much the entire northern portion of the city, so everything north of 16th Street is gonna be completed with this portion of the grant. So, we've been, I think, pretty lucky to have a good contractor that we've been able to continue to work with. We've been getting good prices, considering the market. So, we've been able to do a lot with what we've gotten and, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna take care of about 70% of the city. And speaking as to, of to the leaks that we've experienced over the years, we actually did an audit this recent year, I guess we have to do every so often. And we've seen already a reduction and a significant reduction in leakage just from that first phase. So, it's good news. It's doing what we're supposed to do. The next projects on my memo will be the stormwater, stormwater projects. I had some note there regarding the stormwater pump station improvements, which we've carved out some money from the ARPA, ARPA money to replace pumps there. That's still ongoing. We've been coordinating with pump suppliers on that to try to get pricing so we can move that forward. On the drainage projects, the 2022 citywide drainage improvements was put out to bid last month. That project was completed and designed a couple of months ago. We put that out to bid. We did receive bids on Friday. We received bids from four bidders. And again, very pleasantly surprised at some of the numbers we were getting. We actually received two bids that were below our estimate, which I was quite shocked with. So, that might be some, just some good news that, you know, there's there's some folks looking for work out there, so. The apparent low bidder is actually the same contractor that is doing our work in the water main project, so that's great. We've been, we've been having a very good relationship with them, so it's good to see that, you know, they're putting in some low bids to try to keep working with us, so that's good. You'll, hopefully, in the next commission meeting, we'll have a package to you guys to award that contract and be able to move forward on that portion of the drainage design. And then we actually submitted a grant for the next phase of drainage this past month. And hopefully, we're successful on that going forward to continue to take care of kind of some of the pocket drainage issues that we have. No real update on the citywide speed limit. I guess at this point, we're just waiting for some direction whether or not we're gonna pursue the study.
We'll have an idea the next month or so, so, yeah.
The other one I kind of wanted to note was the flashing beacon crosswalk here at City Hall on the crossings. We did determine that, actually, the exact model that I included there in the in the package is on the approved products list, which means that we're allowed, that exact one, we're allowed to use that. There's a few others in the system that we're allowed to use, but that particular one is permissible. So, we'll work with the city to see the next step and putting together proposals, putting together a design package to put out and get permitted and constructed. Speaking with the manager, we're looking at not only adding the more visible signage, but going ahead and just kind of updating the intersection as a whole, putting in better striping and signage and just bringing everything up to current standards and beautifying it essentially, so. Yep. That'll work. So, the county's only concern was that it's an approved product by DOT, that product is. So, I think we have the green light to move forward and submit to the county.
Good.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to make some time for me. I came back on the red eye this morning from Los Angeles. I was at the ITS World Congress.
Oh, nice. Okay, yeah, yeah.
And there was a lot of things I saw, which I know we'll talk about.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
So, does anyone have any questions for the engineer? Are you finished with the reporting?
I think that's it, yeah. The last thing here was the welcome signs that we're still finalizing contract with the contractor, just some issues on some details with the signs and we'll get that going.
Good.
I might have a wheelchair, but... Just a point of clarification, if we do, if we send out a RFP for this and we decide to go with a certain company, for instance, we get this one installed, doesn't require any hardwiring or anything, it's solar powered. Say in the future, we like the application here in front of City Hall, we decide we want to put it elsewhere. Is it as simple as just calling that same company or we'd have to go through this whole process again?
No, typically, we'll have to go out to an RFP. I mean, it depends on the timing. If we do this and we have a contractor under contract on another project, you know, sometimes we can, we can do a change order and that type of work is so, it's so kind of small that...
Right, so would it be beneficial to us to possibly purchase a few of these with anticipation of placing them throughout the city and other?
Now, if I can go on this, at the ITS World Congress, there was about six firms there that have essentially the same product. It's a rarely available product. I mean, procuring it is pretty quick. I mean, basically, it's not a situation, and you can tell me I'm wrong, a situation where just people just give you their best price and that's it.
And at the end of the day, it is a piece of technology, so in five years, it could be antiquated. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that just because of the cost. It's not a, it's not a big, big cost item. I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for the engineer or anything you reported?
I have, I have something to report. Good news. We have the money from Miami-Dade County to purchase our bucket truck so we can begin with our tree trimming service. Hopefully, I believe it, it's already been submitted to the vendor with all the specifications. Mr. Penn, do you have an update on it? Any good? We just sent it in, so we're gonna have to wait. But we got the money and all we need now is the truck, so.
Beautiful.
Good news.
That's my question. Do we have the money already?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Do you have the money already?
Yes, we received it from Miami-Dade County. Yes, sir.
For the buyer to purchase the trimming truck?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Commissioner Rebecca Sosa? 220?
223,000 and change.
Yeah, she battled and helped us. She appropriated that money for us. You know, she had to go to bat for us and, you know, we're ever so grateful and thankful for her once again.
It's unbelievable how much it costs those trucks.
220?
That's excellent news. Thank you. Thank you for working on that, Vice Mayor. I guess we're going into committee reports?
Yes, item 9, committee report.
Anybody have any reports? No reports? Alrighty. At this point, I know I promised two commissioners here a quick, a quick break, very quick break. Let's try to reconvene at 9, 9... Let's be realistic, 9:20 and let's power through the rest of the agenda, all right? Use the restroom, we're back at 9:20.
See you, Luli.
The information, once everyone received the information, which is hard to like divulge throughout the masses, but...
The candy one, they probably got pastelito, I don't know what you're saying.
You don't think there's more caramel?
No, 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 that's me.
I'm back.
Alrighty, alrighty, let's, uh, let's get this show back on the road. So let's continue this meeting, um, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I know we have some residents in the room, can we take item?
The request for appeal, item D and E.
Item D and E out of order.
Yes. Item eleven D, request for appeal of variance, application before the planning and zoning board to build a swimming pool within the required ten feet rear and side yard setback of the property, of the property located at fifty-seven thirty-nine Southwest Twelfth Street, West Miami, Florida. The pool, if allowed, would have a rear and side yard setback, uh, a given point of five feet to the rear and side property line where ten feet is required, property has a six-foot concrete wall fence in the side and rear yards, zoning ordinance two eighty-two, section four, section eleven. I think we have time. And the applicants are present, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Vice Mayor, the zoning board had a hearing on, uh, August twenty-third for this variance, where the property owner, uh, presented his, uh, request for variance. As stated, uh, there is a, uh, the lot is a vacant lot that was, uh, had a previous house on it, but it burned back in twenty nineteen, and since that time, they, uh, removed the structure that was there, and the property was sold to the gentleman that's requesting the, the variance. He's, uh, requesting the variance so that he can, uh, place the, the pool first on the property, since once the house is built, he won't be able to access the back. And, uh, his request for the variance is because the lot is one of the, it's actually the smallest lot on, on that block. This is a, I believe it was a five thousand square foot lot, five thousand and change, where all the other ones are much larger. Uh, he is planning to build a two-story home to maximize the use of the property, and it's for his daughter, once it's finished. Mr. Rodriguez is here, if you wish to request any information from him.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to request, uh, to appear the request for variance, and you have the paper we give for that, and we request with respect to, you know, to taking care of our, of, of a new house over there. My name is Jose Rodriguez, fifty-seven thirty-nine Southwest Twelfth Street.
Would you like to speak on, on, on this item? Like, explain a little bit, uh, from your perspective?
We request the, the variance to, to build the, the pool first, and you can see in, in the exhibits, B, this lot is the more small, not only in the, in this street, but in the zone, we check the eleven street and ten street, and it's the, is a small, a small lot property over there. For this reason, I, we think we have a hardship, and we want to build first the pool, because to maximize everything first.
Mr. Mayor.
And we put here in the first page, the reason why we do i- this request. And also, we build a fence, a, a brick as fence, six feet, to avoid some, some problem with the neighborhood, and to keep this bird sec- secure for the other neighborhood, and if this is, granted this variance, we think is no, will be damage for the, for the, from everyone. Go ahead.
Mr. Penna, what would be the, the reason to deny this? Because at the end of the day, this is a family moving here, you know, they're gonna build a beautiful home on here, if that's all that fits, is there something I'm missing as far as, you know, something that could be detrimental to the community to allow the variance?
No. Variants are usually given to properties that have pre-existing buildings on the property because they can't meet our setbacks. In his case, there is no property there yet, there's no, there's no structure. So the structure can be downsized in order to fit a pool, but he actually, having the smallest, uh, property on that block, he wants to maximize the use of the property for his enjoyment. Uh, five-feet setback is not uncommon throughout the city, we have a lot of pools that are set back at five feet, because people have applied for their variances, and they've been granted it in the past.
So if he were to build the house first, and then upon completion, request a variance, it would be approved?
Probably not, because then at that point, it would be self-imposed.
Okay, what was the, what was the planning and zoning discussion? I see, I see there's a recommendation from, uh, yourself.
Yes.
Uh, recommend, uh, recommending approval, and then I see, uh, yes, go ahead, you can go first.
Mr. Penna, can this plant, it's five feet, in the letter he made, is six?
Six is the required setback. If he, if he's to put the pool, uh, at where he wants it, it'll be five feet instead of six.
It's not ten?
Not in his case, because he has a smaller lot than anybody else, and our minimum setback now is six feet.
So exists the six feet?
Right now, that's what the lot is, uh...
But I mean, in our, in our regulations, there are pools with a six-feet setback.
We have pools with five-feet setbacks.
With five also?
Yes.
In special cases?
Yes.
So in the same sense that we made, I guess, uh, an exception for the smaller lot, to allow him the six-foot setback as opposed to ten, I feel that we should make the same exception to allow him to have a comfortable home for his family. If there's no danger to the community, I mean, obviously, if he's building the pool first, he's gonna have a fence to protect, you know, children from falling in and stuff before the home is built, right? After the pool's built, there's gonna be something to ensure that the community can't go in there and hurt themselves. But I, I feel that this should be approved, if it's allowed already within our, our city. I understand that he can adjust the property, but being that it's a small lot, I wouldn't want him to have to adjust the home to a, a space that's not comfortable for his daughter and for the family that's gonna grow up here, so, I mean, I would, I wouldn't see an issue with approving this.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Where's our attorney?
He was, uh, ill, so he had to leave.
Yeah, he had an excuse.
Okay, because, you know, it, if we decide to allow this, we, we set a precedence.
We already have set precedence on other lots.
Yes, but this is, this is, this is...
This is completely different, because there's no structure, exactly.
This is an empty lot, you're talking about an empty lot.
Correct.
If we, if we vote in a positive, we are setting precedence.
Yes, you are.
And I don't know what the legal implication of that is, you know, because, you know, usually, usually typically, you get a variance because there's, there's an encumbrance, there's a...
There's a hardship.
There's, there's, there's a hardship in the property that's costing you not to be able to extend your wall, or extend your, your pool, or, or, or whatever. In this case, there's none. In this case, you have an empty lot.
Correct.
And, you know, so this is almost like a self-imposed situation.
But the hard...
So, so I, I, unless we have an attorney here, and he can legally, you know, maneuver us through, through this, because we're gonna be, we will set a precedence.
Yeah, but it, it's not a common, like, you don't, we don't have to, so, unlike, unlike if we were in, you know, in, we're a judge in court, we're not setting some common law precedent that we have to follow, uh, these are, these are site-by-site, uh, determinations. So it, you know, it's, it's as a precedent in the sense that, you know, the next time that this happens, Mr. Penna will come up here and, and say, look, this is what we've done, but it's, it's not set a set precedence that's gonna put us at risk of, you know...
It would set a, it would set a similar precedence as to the first time that a five-foot variance was allowed, and now it's common.
I, I personally don't feel comfortable here making a decision without the attorney. I see that the planning and zoning voted, uh, every single one of them voted against.
What was their reasoning?
And...
The same.
Yeah, but we just...
The fact that there's no structure on the property.
See, that's a, that's a big issue, that's a self-imposed condition.
Right, but...
Before he bought, before he bought the property, he knew that this property was this wide and this long, it's, 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 it's self-imposed. So if, if we make a decision now, we are setting precedence, because every Dick, Joe, and Harry that comes up here with an empty lot's gonna say, whoa, wait a minute, you did it for this guy, you gotta do it for me.
Yeah, but what that's gonna mean is that they come with an empty lot, and they're putting a pool in a beautiful home, it's gonna make our neighborhood look nice, it's, it's not like they're damaging our neighborhood.
Commissioner, that's not the point, I would want, I would want that just as much as you do. It, it's another point, you know, you have an empty lot, you don't have a structure on it. It is, it is, it is a, a capricious, self-imposed situation.
I understand that codes, ordinances, they're there to maintain a certain look and safety of our community, if there isn't something that I'm missing that's gonna create a danger here to our community...
It's not a danger, it's, it's, it's what the law to obtain a variance dictates, it has to be self-imposed on the property, and I believe that in this case, it's not. So I'm not an attorney, I think, I think we need the attorney here to make that decision.
Wait, 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 Juan, don't go, I have a question for you.
All right, all right, go, 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 go ahead, and then Commissioner Suarez, go ahead, respond to what you were going to.
I, I disagree with you, with, when, with this point, you say, eh, we, we going to sell, create a hardship, the one we going to is to avoid, to gr- to create a hardship. If we're going to create the hardship, then when I say, so, I said the, I sold the property, said the property, they come and have the, have the hardship, and they want to apply the property. The only thing we have here, we have various exceptional here, this is the, is more lot over there, no, it's different. The other lot, you can see in the exhibit, is, is more the one thousand feet more on this lot. For me, it's very unfair that you say that, and you see, the next, the next lot is ten thousand three hundred, the next lot is seven, eight, is close to eight thousand feet, our lot is only five to fifty. It's, it's, this is the exceptional for we apply for this variance, we don't want to create a, a half, a hardship.
Uh, Commissioner, what were you...
We is prepared to consider that, please, if, if we approve that, everything lost, we lost, everything lost, because we put this property over there, we're going to pay more taxes, we're going to pay to the people here more, you know, we investing here, and we put our money here, a lot of money, how is very difficult to put, we nobody want to put money.
Uh, go ahead, question.
I have a question. Your name, sir, is, the name, your name?
Jose Rodriguez.
Jose, I'm sorry, it's here, Jose Rodriguez, Rodriguez, uh, Jose, and Odalis, Odalen Martino, Jose Rodriguez. I think the question is, this is the question what I'm going to ask. Juan, we have pools with a five-feet, uh, setbacks.
Yes.
Alright, so we have some exceptions, I mean, we made some exception with five. Now, in those cases, the houses were built already.
Yes.
So it's a big difference, Mr. Rodriguez, what the Commissioners there, Vice Mayor, the Commissioners are talking, is that if the house was built, like Mr. Penna said, and the, the owner of the house come to the city and said, I have this piece of land in my lot, and I need accommodate the pool, please give me some kind of different measurements, but the house was built, but, but, excuse, excuse, Rodriguez, Rodriguez, can you listen to me? The big difference in this conversation is that was, eh, pools approved for five feet, the bill, the house was built, in your case, they, they are talking about that then the house is not built, so it's empty lot, so it's a big difference, if you have, I have the house, please accommodate my measurements to make a pool, it's a different thing, do you get it? You understood me?
I have another point to make.
I'm talking about the real thing, actually, the physical thing, the difference between the house built and the empty lot, that's what I went clear, clarified about the difference they are talking about.
Let me play my point, my point is...
Sir, I know your point, you, you make a nice explanation here, and then you, you talk about, I understand that, but the only point that I need you to understand is the difference they're talking about is that, that the house was built, in your case, the house is not built.
So I'm looking at this as a more practical sense, say, he's an investor, and he's building the home, and he plans to sell it, a year from now, the new homeowner's standing in front of us asking for a variance, it's already been a precedence that's set, that we will allow that, this is a gentleman that wants to invest in our community for his daughter, they're not going anywhere, I don't understand why...
You see, that, that's, and I'm, and in a second, I'm gonna, I know that there's members of the audience here that wanna, you know, talk on this item, um, but that's the part that I, that I'm struggling with too, right, is we're, we're having a whole discussion about, you know, the, the, the building, the structure being built, right, as being a determinative factor, but we're all saying that because of, when the structure's built, we've approved these, so if he were to just build the structure, leave that land open as it is, and, and the next property owner comes in...
Yes, exactly.
And asks for the variance, we're saying that in the past, a precedent has been that we approved it, so, you know, that, that, that's the, that's the only thing that I'm, that I'm struggling with too, is, you know, I, I get it, he has the ability to plan for it right now, but also, you know, why is the next person better than the guy building it? But, be, be, on that, on that point, I, I, I do know that there was members of the, of the, of the public that wanted to speak on this item, if I could, I'd like to take the opportunity now to hear their, their, you know, their concerns or questions.
Let me, it's, by saying, a common sense, this is the only lot, is the very small over there, no, it's, no, it's over there, the zone, lot like this, this is the difference, here we request, because the goal is for everyone, but what happened with some property that have hardship like this, you know, and we know what want, eh, you know, we want to create the hardship, we, this is, this will be happen then.
Right, and, and I'm sorry, I, I, I was, I was correct, this is the request for appeal, right, uh, the next item is resolution, which is where members of public will be able to speak, uh, let me know.
There is no public speaking in, in appeals to you, sir, the board. This is not a public hearing, this is a variance application on appeal to the City Commission.
Oh, so we're acting as, uh...
As the board.
As, yeah.
I just don't want the board, or I just don't want the days to get caught up in semantics, the wording, you know, if the building's built or it's not...
Since, since we don't have the ability to have people come up, uh, I, I understand your point, and, and the, um, again, I, I, I see, I see this stark difference and, you know, unanimous vote on, on the planning and zoning front, what were the specific, was the only, was the only issue the planning and zoning board had, the fact that there was no structure?
That's correct.
So their argument was that...
There's no hardship on the land right now.
There's no hardship on the land right now.
Correct.
I mean, I'd feel much different if, Mr. Penna, I would say that by doing this, we're creating some sort of a hazard, something like that, but the fact that they already, this is already allowed.
I mean, if you all feel like tabling it to Mr. Buehler Lobos, is that the next meeting, you could do that.
I, 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 I think that's, that's important, I think one of the, I think your biggest challenge, right, at the moment, I don't, I don't, really, it doesn't bother me which way you vote, obviously, but your biggest challenge, I've heard you say, is, is the idea of precedent legal, you know, eh, would, would it make you more comfortable if you're, at all, if the city attorney was, was present to answer your questions?
You know, I, 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 I understand your point, I understand his point, and, and I understand your point.
And I mean, I'm sorry, and I mean that for anyone at the table, is, is there anyone who is struggling with the fact that the city attorney is not here for this, for this part of the presentation?
I'm struggling with it, you know, and the, 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 the way that I look at it is, you know, uh, it, it's not if it creates a hazard, it's not if it looks bad, it's not if it's gonna cause issues, the fact is that it, it, it has to do with the lot, it has to do with the property, the hardship has to be... The hardship has to be on the property. And, you know, you have a vacant lot.
Yeah.
There's no hardship.
I, I, I think it's worth, I, if you can allow me for a second, I, I think, considering the, I mean, what probably isn't unique in other governments, but is now a unique case for our government, I think it would be smart to have the city attorney present.
I agree.
To, to make sure that we are in line with everything. So how can we go about, and, uh, tabling this to the next advertised meeting? To make sure that the city attorney is here to answer any questions from the board?
I have a simple question.
Absolutely. Go ahead, sir.
We are a great community here in West Miami, no? Everyone have here, everyone move here. Can you tell me how many vacant lot now here in West Miami are?
No.
Nothing. This is the only one. The last one is coming, is building now.
No, I, I.
This is not happening. Two more happening this.
No, I understand that. I think, I think.
Can you tell me how many, how many?
No, sir.
Empty lot are here?
Sir, so the, the, what I'm, I think you're making my point.
This happening is zero, 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 one percent.
Sir, I, I think you're making my point. My point is that your situation is very unique, and because the uniqueness of the situation, it's causing some members of the commission to have some concerns, unlegal concerns, that their questions aren't being answered, because our, our city attorney had to step out for, for medical reasons, right? So I'm saying, I think that regardless of how, how the members of the City Commission are gonna vote on your application, I think that they would be more comfortable in their decision, one way or the other, um, if the city attorney was here, present to answer their questions. And frankly, I think that the city attorney being here might benefit your cause. So, uh, you know, so that's, that's what I, that's why I say that. I, I do think that we, you know, you, you can kinda see which way I'm leaning, but I, I wanted some questions answered as well. So I, I think we should table this discussion, um, and, uh, and Mr. Pena, please advise me on how you think we should do that, to re-advertise, to, uh, to speak about this at the next commission meeting.
It's just publicized on your regular agenda. All you need to do is motion to table the, the item.
To continue it. Motion to continue it.
It's not a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing. Just deferred until next.
Deferred.
By the way, you, you know, we have, we have an anonymous decision by our planning and zoning.
Well, yeah, but we also have a recommendation from staff, so it's, it's weird. It's weird.
So we're, I know, but you know what? We're, we're gonna overrule all, all of them, you know, uh, all five of them?
Sorry, I, I respect them as much as you, I, I, you know, but we're a different board, and, and I, and maybe we go with them, maybe we don't, but there's a reason there's steps, right?
As much as I want the gentleman to have his house, and have his pool, and to be happy, you know, I want that just as much as he does, as much as you do.
You know, I, I.
You know, I, I sit here, and I gotta make a decision, and I gotta make sure I make the right decision. You understand that? I have a lot of responsibilities sitting here, making decisions. I wanna make sure that the decision I make is a lawful one. You understand?
Right. So, so, so that's what we're, that's what we're gonna talk about. To your point, um, I, you know, that's why I'm asking what their, their contention was when you say unanimously. I also think, I also, while I, while I respect the planning and zoning members, I also, uh, to your point, also, don't, don't give a damn how they decided, right? Because we are, we're reviewing it brand-new on, on, you know, on its face, and that's the beauty of the, of this process, right?
You're actually reviewing it at a higher level, because you need four-fifths to overturn their vote.
That's right. So, um.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Juan, why, this gentleman, he presented a plan. Why he don't make the pool one feet closer to the house? Nine, and then six to the, the setback?
Correct. The, the setback to the east is not the big issue, it's the setback to the rear.
To the rear.
Yeah, but he, he moved one feet, one foot in each, in each direction.
No, no, it's 10 feet. The setback to the inside wall of the pool is 10 feet.
For the house.
10 feet from the property lines.
All right.
Yeah, but you say we may have 10, six, with six.
Six is for the structure, the minimum setback for a structure, six feet.
All right.
We, we're not gonna get anywhere on this until we have answers from the attorney. So let's, uh, can I get a motion to table this item to the next meeting for the city attorney president?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're, we're gonna table this to make sure the city attorney is here to, to provide all the answers and, and provide, uh, guidance. I, I apologize for that, but I think it's important. You're correct, the uniqueness of the situation allows for that.
I want to issue, are you taking care of all fact? They really were taking care, the fact happened here, because it's the only lot, it's, you know, happened, lot vacant here is zero.
Right, but, but, again, you're making my point. There's, there's, it's a very unique situation, and because of that, there hasn't been anything decided by this board on something similar. And because of that, there's members of this body, including myself, that would like guidance from the city attorney to make sure that our questions legally are, are answered. So I, I apologize for making you wait on that tonight. I didn't think it was gonna be necessary for him to be present. He usually doesn't leave. He had a medical emergency. But, uh, we're gonna table this for the next meeting.
Yes, October 5th. October 5th.
And, and, uh, and, and make sure that everyone is aware.
We'll bring it back, the, the item.
Thank you for, thank you for, thank you so much for everyone here.
We'll see you again.
Good night. So item is deferred until October 5th, 2022. May I proceed with the next item, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
The, going back to the original order of the agenda, uh, item 11, under New Business Agenda Items, item 11A, this is a second reading, a second public hearing, of an ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending the City of West Miami Comprehensive Plan, providing for the enactment of a property rights element, the goals, objectives, and policies, providing for legislative findings and intent, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
You have to open the public hearing.
Well, it's public hearing. We have somebody public hearings today.
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. Seeing, anyone wanna speak? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Now, we have a motion by Commissioner Blanca.
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Suarez.
Suarez?
Please call the board.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item B, 11B, second reading, a public hearing, ordinance of the mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, codifying resolution 2003, uh, 02, establishing a City of West Miami Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, setting forth qualifications and duties for said board members, setting goals for the advisory board, establishing methodology of appointment, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date.
It's a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? I see movement, no. Public, public hearing is now closed.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Chair, Ivan Chavez.
Motion for Chavez?
Motion by Chavez, second by Commissioner, by Vice Mayor Blanes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Please call the board.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Com, uh, Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
And the next item, please.
Item, item C, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending Chapter 4, Animants and File, Article 1, Section 4-8, expectations to allow for citizens at their own expense to humanely trap cats for the purpose of providing transportation to a licensed professional veterinarian to spay or neuter said cats, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date. This, uh, item is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
So, wait, before we go ahead on that, uh, real quick, I do wanna amend the title before we take it to, before we take it to, uh, to publicize for second, for a second reading.
Okay.
Um, I did get back from the CAT Network on a lot of, uh, recommendations on, on how we should do this, and I do wanna amend the title before we take the second reading. Where it says, um, where it says, "Trap cats for the purpose of providing transportation to a licensed professional to spay or neuter said cats," I'd like to amend the title language to, to include implementing humane population control of community cats through trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return services. And I'll provide you that language in writing.
Okay, so that'll be the language, uh, that will be advertised, uh, the added language, amending the first reading.
So can I get a motion on the amended title for which reading?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Suarez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we need to disclose the date of the proposed pub, ten, of the, um, second reading on that ordinance.
Juan, can you have it advertised for?
Okay. For the second meeting of October of the 19th. The 19th.
Okay. Let's save it for then.
October 19th, 2022, at 7:30, public hearing for this item. Next item, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, item 11F, resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending the 10-year capital improvement plan for major projects for the recreation center at Cooper Park, 2020 to 2030 projects, providing for effective date.
Mr. Mayor, you have a, um, a detail in your agenda packet that speak to, speaks to the issue of the proposed 10-year CIP plan for the major projects in our recreation and open spaces.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any, uh, movements?
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Pena.
Before you, you vote, the, also, the, the, I don't know if you got to read all the items that are in the, the cap list, but if, but if you want to add anything for the future, now would be the time to add it, because this is the list that we rely on for applications to grants. But it has to be motioned by the majority of you to put that item on the list.
Do we have the kitchen sink already in it?
No, we don't. We actually reduced it a lot, because we've done a lot of work over the years.
So we need to make sure we got everything in there.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Renovation of Chavez? Yeah.
When we start listing.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Your list consists of the building and lighting renovations currently taking place at the rec center. So that is all already in progress.
Right. It also has the resurfacing of the tennis courts, which is in progress, and then you have our acquisition for park, land for parks, uh, and then we also have lots that we've identified in previous years for, that would be good for a park if we had the money to buy it. And then there's also replacement equipment at the recreation center and at Cooper Park. And then further down, uh, you have the new flooring for the, the new flooring mats for the weights sitting there, you have the, the replacement of the free weights, and you replace the weight machines that are there now. But anything else that you want to add, such as, uh, professional gym equipment that you all discuss at the, at the advisory board level, you need to insert it now, so that we have a figure for purposes of grants.
Wasn't that already earmarked somewhere, Madam Manager? That I saw?
We put some money aside for the new building.
Right, in the budget.
But it never hurts to have it in the list, because if a, uh, grant comes up, instead of using our money, we use grant money.
I'll, I'll make a motion to add that to the, the gym equipment.
Amending, uh, amending professional gym equipment, amending professional gym equipment to, into this list? Or is there anyone else with any recommendations they would like to add?
Would it be wise to maybe postpone this and, and meet?
I'm sorry?
Would it be wise, maybe, to postpone this and meet, you know, the recreational board can meet and, and, you know, think of just about everything that can be added? Because you know.
That might be, that might become a very long list with the recreational board. That's why it's the City Commission that has to put the majority in there, with a majority vote.
So it's, so it's a limit amount?
Well, whatever we put in there is for, from here until 2030.
And keep in mind that over the last decade, we've put in over $3 million or two.
Yeah, no, but, but the Vice Mayor makes a good point. If, is there, is there a time limitation on, on this?
No, but we would like it before the next grant cycle.
Right. So can, can we, can we get this on the, on an agenda for Parks and Recreation Board? Now, I mean, I take your point, the list would be very long, so, um, you as chair, can, can you try to create a situation where you, you say, listen, let's not, let's not get past five recommendations to add, let's say.
Top five.
And, yeah, and come out of there with, with a, with five, or, you know, or less, but, but, again, it doesn't have to be five, I'm just making sure that the list doesn't become a wish list of everything you've ever heard of in a park.
Right.
Um, but I think it would be smart, that, that is the reason the board is there, to do things that I'm not thinking about, that I don't particularly use in the park. So if there's no time restraint, let's try to do that. I think we should, I guess, table this item for indefinitely, get it on, onto a Parks and Recreation Board meeting, make sure that you as chair set the parameter, uh, to make sure that the list doesn't, uh, you know, there were just a few good suggestions. Um, and I think that would be, uh, a good way to use our, our knowledge and residents and, uh, to get, to get a good list together. Um, so if, if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to table, in, table this item indefinitely.
Whatever, as they, they're bored.
Yeah, at the last board meeting, we did discuss many items, but we focused more so on, on the grants that had to be submitted by the deadline. So there, there are ideas that are already circulating and, and.
Yeah, so, so let's just try to make sure that it's, that it's a compact list, prioritize. But I think it would be smart, if we're gonna do this, you know, to get, to make sure that we, uh, you know, take the Vice Mayor's suggestion, we, we take, we put, uh, we put those guys to work. So, uh, can I get a motion to table this indefinitely?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, a second by Commissioner Suarez. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Twenty, 20 years as the rec advisory board chairman here.
John Michael, John Michael's not here, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, maybe.
Thing is that.
Right now, we're all tired, you know, we're all wanna go.
Commissioner Blanas sees the rec as like a baby, small surface area.
The whole thing is-
I just, um, if I may interject real quick, Mister Mayor and members of the commission and especially Chairman Chavez now, chairing, uh, the, the park and recreations, I think we're, we need to do a, an inventory, us do an inventory of when all this equipment was actually erected or placed at the park so that we get an idea of what the lifespan is on these equipments because we may wanna revisit equipment at some point. So, I think if you give us a little bit of time, maybe about thirty to forty-five days to go back and look at all the improvements at every park facility, we can tell you, you know, with a certain degree of certainty, um, what to expect in terms of, um, length of time, duration of the equipment, and, you know, obviously barring an emergency. So, so that you can have something solid to work with.
Sounds good. I'll, I'll wait for your word on that.
Okay, you guys work on that privately. So let's move on to the next item.
Item eleven G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute a change order to that certain contract authorized by resolution twenty twenty thirty-seven with McGold, Inc., for the purpose of completing the potable water main improvement phase one project, which is attached, attached here to and made part hereof as exhibit eight, in the amount of six hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred two dollars, providing for funding, providing for an effective date.
Go ahead, speak, uh, anyone speak on this item?
May I give you the funding sources so that you all can make a decision on this?
Yes.
Okay. The funding sources would come out three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the DEP grant for year two. The match from the city is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's in the budget already, um, for a total of six hundred thousand dollars. And then we have in reserve designated, um, a few extra dollars and the twenty-eight thousand would come out of reserve designated.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on the table?
No, this is the second, this is the second.
Phase one B.
This is the second part of a, part, the, east, the, east side, Harry.
Yes, this project continues where the first phase left off. We left some stub outs there. This will-
With this, we finish the east side?
No.
No, this is just the next phase. And then after this, we have the phase two, which is the, the big chunk that's, that's-
But with this, we finish the first, the first-
This'll finish everything east of Fifty-Ninth Avenue.
The first area that we identified from the, from fifty-seven to the west.
Yep.
All right.
Eric, any other questions?
Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Uh, item H, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami approving a peafowl mitigation policy and directing the city clerk to transmit said policy to the Miami, to the Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners for approval pursuant to the Miami-Dade County Code, Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, Section Five Sixteen, Taking of Peafowl Prohibiting.
Okay, want to explain what this is about?
I asked the, uh, the city manager-
Is this?
To add this to, uh, to our agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, this is, uh, exactly, uh, the same resolution that the City of Coral Gables, uh, I believe also sent to Miami-Dade County for, you know, for their approval or not.
Right.
We, uh, had to hire a company to come in and remove roosters and chickens from, uh, Cooper Park and also from our, um-
Garden Club.
Our Garden Club Park. Um, you know, uh, you know, we're a metropolitan city smack in the middle of, uh, of a metropolis, you know, uh, and, you know, uh, our ordinances are, are against having, you know, farm animals and, you know, chickens and roosters are farm animals. Peafowl refers to, um, uh, the, the, the type of fowl that, you know, like a peacock, you know?
Exactly.
That's, basically, that's what it's making reference to. And these, uh, peacocks are, are a great nuisance, you know? They, you know, I, I, I know that probably originally, you know, somebody in maybe Pinecrest or Palmetto Bay, you know, or some part, you know, southwest of here, you know, wanted to get a peacock and entertain their kids, you know? And they got them a peacock. And then the next thing you know, you got two peacocks, and then three peacocks, and then ten peacocks. And then the next thing you know, they're all over Palmetto Bay, Pinecrest, Coral Gables. And, you know, they're all over the place. And, and they are a nuisance. They are loud, they are aggressive, they scratch cars, they get up on top of cars.
They paint.
And their, and their feces is like, almost like a dog, small dog feces. I have a friend of mine in Pal, that lives in Palmetto Bay, and every day he has to rinse his driveway because it's all full of dung from the, uh-
Yeah, South Miami, they are here.
In, in South Miami also. So, you know, to preempt, you know, uh, they might come across the street, you know, and, uh, so, um, I mean, I don't know, or maybe somebody tries to get one to entertain their kids or just, you know, for, for their own amusement. I think it would be prudent, you know, if we consider, if we consider this, you know? I know the City of Coral Gables puts a lot of thought into everything that they decide they wanna do, you know? So, uh, I, you know, being in a, a, a neighbor to our east, uh, I think that we should, you know, congruently, uh, agree and go along with this if, if it's, if it's what, you know?
Okay, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
We have to do something, make a motion.
I, I make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion? Well, let me, let me first, before, before we can step, step back, is there anything, is there any concerns or question or from the administration? No?
No.
Beautiful. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Suarez, correct? Who, who made the, who made the motion?
I did.
We, we have a motion by Vice Mayor. Uh, we have a, a second by Commissioner Suarez. Please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
How do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item, item eleven I, discussion on height of hedges and of residential properties by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yeah, so this, this issue started, uh, beautifully the day after I got elected. The day after I got elected, all of a sudden, the city was carpeted with, uh, with courtesy fines or fines, I didn't even know what the hell was going on. Um, it was predecessor to, to our current, uh, code enforcement officer. Um, and I don't know, again, I, it's, I, I've never gotten that. I'm sure, I'm not the only person on the table who's gotten as many calls about their side hedges, um, as recent memory. In the last, in the first, my first two and a half, three years as a commissioner, I didn't, I don't think I received one call. And then all of a sudden, that's all people talk about. Um, and I've seen a lot of the properties, and a lot of the properties, I, I, you, you look at them and you're going, damn, we're finding this property, when they're, you know, beautifully maintained properties. And I get it, there's, 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 you're, you're, it's, you're not finding them, but you're, you're courtesy noticing them about a fine because there's a law that's in place and they have to follow it. Um, so I, I, I just, I just think on the sides, I think it might be prudent. I know, I know, Vice Mayor, you did some work on hedges, uh, recently, in the last, what, two years, one year and a half?
Yes, basically, um, I, I brought up, um, and I think the planning and zoning agreed with me. Uh, I wanted to, 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 uh, help neighbors that actually have pools in the back of their property, uh, a little bit more, uh, privacy.
Right.
You know, because our lots are not, not as big. So, you know, I, I, I believe that at the time, you could only, your hedge could only be six feet. So we allowed the hedge in the back to be eight feet. And then after the first setback, um, six feet.
Five feet.
Oh, five feet.
Right.
Five feet. So, so to the first setback, it's, they can have eight feet. And then from then on, it's, it's five feet.
Right, because, you know, and from a, from a privacy perspective, right, I've, I've always thought that well manicured-
To the back of the-
Uh, well manicured side hedges are actually a benefit. I, I, I mean, I, for somebody who, go ahead.
I think where you're getting the most, uh, strife over the new ordinance is that on corner lots, they have two front yards. So those that had the eight feet along the side, on the exterior side, where their, the front of their house doesn't face the, the other side yard, now they're having to bring it down to the five feet. And now we've lost the visibility that Vice Mayor, uh, was intending to do by allowing them eight feet on the interior lots.
Okay.
So you have, that's where your opposition and your phone calls are coming from.
I mean, they, they haven't all been corner lots though. There's, there've been-
But the majority.
Quite a few, uh, you know, especially the ones that I've seen that, that again, that you, you look at it and you go-
Yeah, they're very nicely maintained.
Yeah, right. Uh, and, you know, I think the, the conversations that they've had with the city, um, have been, you know, behind the reasoning of the policy. You know, I think some of the stuff they've been talking about is visibility on their car exiting. But most of these lots, it doesn't, it doesn't really, you know, make sense because-
Mayor, I have a more comment.
Go ahead, please.
Years ago, I remember this conversation was brought to the table by some residents. And I remember that we agreed in the front, from the house to the front, five feet, four or five, from the house to the back, six. And I remember, eh, that one of the reasons in the back, the people walking the alley, was not, eh, agreed to get over six because you don't know who walk there. And I remember the police department talked about it, that they recommend only six, so can be view of whoever walks because all our city, we have alley behind the houses. So if we got too high, it's a hiding place for people. You don't know who's there, you don't know who walk there. They maybe come there and sleep there and you don't know. And that was one of the reasons. That too high and too obscure, too privacy, that's a problem also for those sometimes criminals.
In the back, right.
In the back with the alleys. And then that was a conversation that in the end, eh, the agreement was five feet in the front, four or five, five, right?
Five.
Eh, in the front. And six around.
Eight. The recent, the recent change was to eight.
On the side.
In the re-
In the alley, in the alley was keep at six.
Eight.
Well, my, eh, one I remember was six, the conversation, because the police department-
That was, that was the prior, uh, ruling. In February of this year, you changed it to eight.
So I guess what I'm asking is-
Well, I tell you-
I, I mean, even if it was six feet, I'm the only one up here that you would see three inches of me above the head. That makes no difference.
Superman, the pit of though.
And if someone wanted to sleep back there, they could sleep back there with two feet.
You gotta hide it. You gotta hide it.
Thinking about this practically though-
But if you get a guy like an inspector like me, we can't hide it.
Yeah, but, but thinking about this practically, I, I'm getting questions from residents too. So, how tall are the walls next to the buildings that are being put up?
Eight.
Eight feet, and they go all the way to the, to the sidewalk?
Yes, where there's, where there's no driveway.
And my question is this, if you said, if, that was recommended eight feet a couple of months ago.
It was changed to eight feet in February.
If that was done, why you bring this today?
Because it's, it's a different-
What you gain, you want over eight?
No, no, that's, that's for a different area of the house. So, I'm, we're talking about in the front, in the, in the front side yards.
Because the corner, I remember the conversation, in the corner, in the corner lots-
Right.
You obscured the view for the traffic. That's a problem. You had to keep a five.
The corner needs a triangle of visibility, which is what Mister Panha referred to, but the mayor's referring to side, or lots that aren't in the corner, we're getting complaints from them as well.
Right, the interior, the interior side, uh, of the interior homes on the side lots. And I think that's where we have to, or, and we have to, but I think, you know, it's, it's worth looking at. Uh, I know you've probably heard the same things I have. I'm sure you have received similar calls as well. Um, and go, go ahead, we'll finish your thought.
The, the main thing that people are referring to is, for instance, Cooper Park, the hedge is there. When the city wants to provide privacy, this is arguments that I'm having, uh, when the city wants to provide privacy to the resident next to Cooper Park, they provide a very tall hedge. So the residents are saying, why can't I provide myself that same privacy?
Because government does not have to abide by their own zone of love.
It's tough to argue though.
Can you explain, I don't understand your point, why you propose?
So, so we, I, I haven't proposed anything yet. I, I'm, this is, I'm bringing up the discussion, I'm bringing up the discussion because there's, so the eight, the eight feet that we're talking about that got changed from six to eight, it got changed already in February.
In the back.
In the back and in the side back.
The side back.
So the, the complaints that I'm, that I'm getting are about, uh, in the front yard, in the front yard, but on the sides.
From the house to the street.
From the house to the sidewalk, right. And, and that, on, that, there's been a lot more enforcement of since April.
Eh, I wonder, why the complaint you have, this too low, you want to make a, you, the people who call you, they want higher?
They, they want, they want to maintain the ones that they have currently higher that they've had for a long time.
The eight bring to the sidewalk?
I don't, I don't know if it's eight feet, I don't know, I mean, but it's-
Because if we already set the eight-
Higher than it currently is.
To, to the side of the house. That's it.
Can I suggest something and we can think about it?
Yep.
We're not gonna be able to do anything till February of next year. We cannot change the ordinance. It's gotta take a whole year before we can, uh, consider changing it. But you know what? Let's, let's think about this. Eight, six, five.
Wait, 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 before you say the point, we, we don't have to wait a year to change the, to amend the ordinance? No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
That is something that's up to the city attorney. That's a, 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 uh, established policy that he placed some time ago.
Yeah, and, and, and I was under the impression that we-
Yeah, that's not a written policy.
No?
Yeah, yeah, that's not a, there was a few policies that were, let me just be, be very clear. There's a few policies that were said-
Think about it and come back.
Yeah, no, there's a few, a few policies that were set in the moment that were never resolutions or procedures. Like, for example, the three-step policy, you couldn't bring an or, an ordinance.
Right.
That, well, again, wasn't written procedure. It was just kind of like, we're gonna do it this way. That's not one of them. I'm not saying change the ordinance within a year. I'm just saying, we don't, we don't have to abide by that. So if, after you, after the ordinance is passed, you find a problem, we can address it, uh, immediately using the same ordinance process. Uh, go ahead.
I think aesthetically, I know that, I guess you're saying you wanna table it?
No, he's not saying table. He was just, he was just under the impression that we don't have to do anything.
I was speaking under the impression that we couldn't do anything till next February. That's been my understanding. That if, if we make an ordinance, we cannot change it. We have to wait a year. I thought that was something.
Right.
I think aesthetically, a good number would be-
That's what our city attorney has stated in the past.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm going by.
Yeah, that's not a procedure.
I think a good number might be six feet in the front, level with the gates that are allowable.
And I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna start throwing numbers around, but I guess what I'm, what, the purpose of discussion was, was first of all, to bring it up as, as a problem that we've, we've been having. And two, and since I think you, you've decided that, you know, you've, you, you have, you've decided numbers in your head. So I think it's a good, it's a good opportunity for you to take, to take over this, this, uh, this, this item if you would like to, to look at it.
Six feet is a number I'm in hearing for, for the gates.
I like to see my neighbor. Who is my neighbor? From the side, walk to the house. I like to see the people get out from the car and walk to the house. I like to see that traffic.
You know, I-
I don't like to see a, to, the privacy because he have a pretty woman or whatever, doesn't wanna go to them. I don't agree with that. I like to see the people walking and who lives there, who's coming.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Anyway, they have been, no broken, don't fix it.
You know-
Has been with five feet, and my recommendation is keeping that way.
It is a little broken.
You know, I, I, I think that we should consider changing the height. We already considered in the back and we addressed it. The, the only, the only, the only consideration is the sides.
Right.
Okay? But not the front.
No.
The front should be, uh, out of bounds.
Yeah.
The front, it should always be five feet because, you know, there's so many implications, safety implications, police matters, uh, you know, uh, for instance, you know, let's say, let's say that we allow, uh, an eight-foot tall hedge in the front. And there's a, uh, a domestic call to the police. There, the man, the woman, and the, the husband and the wife are having a fight, you know? And, you know, the police arrives to the scene and sees the house and sees a hedge. He doesn't know what's going on.
I have-
What's he gonna do is, what, uh, wait, if you can, uh, uh, let me speak.
Yep.
You know, the policeman's gonna get there, he's not gonna have any visibility to, to, to the front of the house, to the door. He's not gonna be able to see what's going on. He's gonna call for a backup, you know? And, you know, he, the backup's gonna take some time to get there. And then, you know what? They, they're gonna make an entrance to that, to that property in a very cautious way, you know? Because, you know, there's, their safe, life safety is first. So, you know, let's just say that something really terrible happens, you know, and there's a, there's a murder, you know? And, well, you know, they're gonna say, well, why didn't the police, you know, uh, uh, approach, you know, the property faster? You know, why, you know, there's, there's always implications to that. And we gotta take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Having, having more than five feet in the front, we should never, ever consider that. The sides, yes. The back, yes, but not the front.
Now, there is an example. Ten terrace, in the back of the house, the ten terrace, eh, about sixty-four, sixty-four is the same number, sixty-four, six-four, five?
Six-three.
Six-four, five?
Six-three, five-seven.
Six-three, five, what? There is a house there that the, the hedge is about eight feet. And sometimes I go to my, the, the mailman, in my box, he puts on mail from the, that neighbor. And I take the mail and take it to the neighbor. Because it, it's ten terrace, but the, the mailman put in ten street. And when I go there, I look at the house and I said that the Iowa has been washing that. So I don't know, I don't see the windows, the door of the house. I park in the, in, in the street, in the wall-
You're saying from the front?
On the side, it's eight. Has been there for, for years. And I, I, I think to myself, well, that's just what I don't want in my house. I want to see the neighbor. I want to see the neighbor from the Rebecca Sosa house to the, to the Gilberto house, all the corner. I like to see in the front and-
Yeah, but there's also, you know, there's also privacy.
I don't like to see over five feet. If it gets too private, then the guy moved to, eh, there is a place that they have by privacy. It's, eh, Golden Beach. He tell the guy who moved to Golden Beach, they have a private, and the chief of police is Cuba friend of mine.
Go ahead, Mister Panha.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record-
Yeah.
Anybody that's paid the fine on the previous issued notices, we have refunded the, the, the violation fee.
I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that comment, uh, because I was gonna suggest two things, and that, but you, you, uh, you hit one of them, so that's, that's good, we're proactive on, on that. Um, number two, I was, the, how, how, how long do you think it would take you, uh, Mr. Chavez, as, uh, voluntold on this project, to work with the administration to see if there's a recommendation, um, that would, that would make sense for interior lots? Um, how, how long, how long do you guys think between two, you know, give a, give a conservative number?
A couple days.
Thirty days at least.
So, why don't we, because what I don't want is to, is, is to be contemplating, and I don't know if it's gonna pass here or not, but contemplating something, and in the meantime, still issuing, uh, citations on it naturally, right? So, let's, let's, you know, I'd like to entertain a thirty, forty-five day moratorium on issuing hedge citations, side hedge citations on interior lots, um, while, while this is kind of, we, we see what comes back from your, your discussions, analyzations, et cetera. Um, what, what do you guys, what do you think, Vice Mayor? Just to see if we, if we can, in a short ter-, period, see if there's anything that makes sense.
You know, I, I, I think, I think that, um, that we have a very strong planning and zoning, um, committee.
That's true.
I think that maybe we should let them look at it, you know, and, and study it. You know, they're the ones that, that, that have been dealing with these types of issues, you know? Maybe they have a little bit more insight than we do.
How, how long do you think it would be ticked together in front of them for their review?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, well, okay. So, same, same concept. So, um, how can we go about, i- is it, is there something, well, you can do it administratively, if everyone's kind of in agreement that we can kind of come back and, and let planning and zoning analyze that point. And in the meantime, obviously, not, uh, enforce that particular violation while, while that's going on, right, that review?
Mayor, the only thing I would like-
Yeah.
To caution you or to bring to your attention is that, believe it or not, this code enforcement officer is exercising the courtesy system to the letter of the law.
I understand that, yeah.
And, and a lot of people are complying now with the five-foot, and, uh, the trimming of their hedges.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I understand that.
If they come to us-
I just, I just agree, I just understand.
Right.
You know, it, it, I'm not saying that the, that, I, I agree, uh, you know, doing a phenomenal job in collaboration with the residents. I'm just saying that, and some of the residents have, you know, they, I go over there to kind of show it to me, they say, look, if I have to comply, I'll comply. But I, the problem is that I kind of agree with why they are calling me, you know, in most of these situations on the interior. So, that's why it's, just because we'll, we'll get them to comply in a way that they're not coming here pissed off, doesn't mean that it doesn't warrant review.
I, I get it, I get it. I, I'm just letting you all know for the record that people are complying. They, they are, you know, yielding to the code enforcement officer, the information that he's providing, and so, that's all.
And, and, and I'm a little biased on the privacy front, I guess, because if anyone remembers the house I grew up in, uh, you, you don't know what the hell was going on in there.
Yeah.
You can't see, you couldn't see in there.
I know, I know.
So, so anyways, do, do, do we need, we don't need any vote on that administratively, you guys will take care of that?
No, we're gonna take care of that, and I guess, um, Mr. Alvarez and, and Juan know that, um, we're gonna put a moratorium for now and-
And just, and quickly analyze it and-
And take it to the next level, absolutely.
All right, I appreciate that. Uh, next item?
Item eleven J, uh, discussion reference to movie night by Commissioner Chavez.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to bring up that I was speaking with the manager, and I wanted, I have some money left in my representation account, and I would like to use that to put on a movie night, if anyone else would want to join me in that venture. The movie night would probably be in November somewhere where it's a little cooler.
How much, how much does that, would that cost?
I don't know what it would cost to rent the equipment, the actual projector, because we do have the equipment to, to put in a, a movie, but I don't know the projector.
Do, do I still have, has my representation funds been, been reverted back to the general funds already?
No, no, we close the year on September thirtieth.
Okay, so-
If you designate an, an expense, I will tell you that it is expensive.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll appropriate mine as well, uh, to that, to that project. I think that's, it's noble, and it's a nice time, November's a nice time to do it.
You, you know who's big on this? Commissioner Rebecca Sosa. Maybe we can reach out to her and do a joint, uh, movie night. She might be able to help out.
Well, you only have two months for Rebecca Sosa, November she's-
I know.
Anyway, I'm sorry. Anyway-
October, then.
I was talking about that, eh, the, the county commissioners, sometimes they bring the movies.
Yep.
If they bring once a month, or, or six of the year, or whatever, you have to plan that. Whatever, if it's elected, Cabrera or Force, whoever is, eh, Force is my candidate. Whatever is, eh, elected, talk to him. And maybe help.
Yeah, but in, in the meantime, I'm, I, 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 I'll join my, my, my funds to your, to your class.
I think we should have a Plan B.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to-
Just in case.
Yeah, I, so, uh, consider me a partner on that, on your efforts.
And then you have, you have Cabrera, so if we, if we win, we have one commission, you win.
Cabrera wins, yeah.
Uh, let's, let's move on from that.
Anyway, we'll talk to someone.
Um, let's, next, next item, next item, please.
We will speak to somebody.
Next item, we're, 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 work on, work on that in the background.
Item eleven K, discussion in reference to twenty-twenty-two Safe Halloween event to include projected costs by city manager. Thank you, and I was talking to, uh, Commissioner Chavez about the Safe Halloween event. We spoke about it briefly, on and off. We've been looking at prices, Cadi has obtained a couple of estimates. I can tell you that on the low side, we're gonna be spending seventy-five hundred dollars in mechanical rights and inflatables. That is to have the event that we had back in twenty-nineteen. Um, we're looking to spend eleven hundred dollars on police, we're looking to spend another eleven hundred dollars in public works, six hundred dollars on the rec center to get them to, the, the, the staff to get them to participate and work it, obviously. Um, candy, we spent, uh, nine hundred dollars last Halloween, and I have to increase it, so I put fifteen hundred dollars, just a ballpark figure for candy. And decorations, which we have a few not-so-good decorations, they're, um, we need to invest twenty, two thousand or, or twenty-five hundred. You're looking at a fourteen-thousand-dollar event.
Go ahead.
What do we have in the, what do we have budgeted for next year for specific events?
You have seventy-five thousand dollars for the year.
Which is normal to what we had last year, right?
It's the same amount of money.
And how much did we spend of that, this past year?
You did not have a Halloween event this past year. So, if you, you have not spent the seventy-five thousand dollars this fiscal year as of this date, what we can do is encumber those funds, reserve that allocation, so that you can start from scratch with a new fiscal year, because as I see it, and with inflation costs, all of your events are going to probably cost thirty or thirty-five percent more than it did pre-COVID.
Well, that's kind of what I was alluding to, that if we had leftover-
We do.
Funds from this year, that-
We do.
Halloween obviously falls into-
We've only expended twenty-eight thousand dollars out of this year's budget.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think the Halloween event was good. Last time, I think we would have to, this time, um, frankly, maybe advertise it a little differently, uh, in hopes of avoiding some, we, we didn't have a bad crowd last, last time, but it was, at some times, uh, an interesting crowd considering there's not a lot of events, I guess. Um, so, it's events usually targeted for kids, and we had a lot of, uh, older, uh, older teenagers that was interesting.
You know, from my recollection, the last time that we had a Halloween event, it was a great success.
No, it was a very good event.
It was incredible.
Twenty nineteen, pre-COVID.
We had, yeah, pre-COVID. We had so many people, I mean, we couldn't believe how many people we had there.
So, so we know now that, that there's gonna be-
Yeah.
There's not that many events, so there's, it's gonna be, well, well-attended.
So, so we were all excited, and we were, you know, planning for next year, we're gonna have, you know, people walking on stilts, you know, we're gonna have this, and we're gonna have that, and, and-
We don't need that.
COVID hit, and-
Go ahead.
I'll be your stilts.
The, the, the latest response there.
The event, uh, thirty-first is a Monday, would we do it on that night, or would be on the, during the weekend?
Um, it's up to you. I have quotes for a four-hour event, I have two quotes already, eh, written quotes, for a four-hour event starting at five PM until nine PM, the, the[1673.03]